Stand for the pledge, if you please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, folks. First part of this meeting is a public hearing to talk about VCDP grant for the Skyline project. And is... Is he on?
Peter's here yet.
Peter, do you want to introduce him?
Sure, so Peter Schneider, he's the person taking the lead on this project. He wrote the grant. He's been helping us along since day one to get this going. If we have technical questions, we can ask Peter. But what I was gonna do, I was just gonna kind of introduce the idea and then see what it looked like. So Peter came to the board, what, two months ago? With the idea of looking into re-operationalizing the Skyline building. Him and his organization felt that with the housing shortage in our area and across the country, Skyline might be an asset to help build that housing, the very much needed housing. So this grant, it's a $60,000 grant to help assess, will, is Skyline still able to operate efficiently with the equipment that's there? And then what's it gonna take to bring that building back online to produce homes? Well, mobile homes. Peter, did I get that right? Peter, can you hear me? Maybe if I turn on my microphone, Peter can hear me.
Oh, yeah. Yep.
Okay, Peter, can you hear me now?
I can.
There you go. Okay, so, and I guess if there were questions?
You were gonna... Did he get the first question you were asked or the...
Peter, do you have something brief to add to what the deal, what we're doing with this grant?
I haven't heard anything thus far, so the first thing I heard was, "You can hear us now."
Oh, oh, sorry. I didn't have my speaker on. So I just gave a brief overview of the project, talking about how the funds will determine if the building is up, is possible to be used to build mobile homes.
Yep, 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 looking at a condition assessment of the building and like a conceptual fit-up design, you know, while also evaluating, you know, what type of residential buildings we could optimize in that plan. Of course, we know what was built there historically and evaluating that with the, you know, sort of production line and factory fit-up of, you know, Skylines, which we have. And then comparing that to some other approaches, you know, whether we can better optimize that factory for constructing homes, or if we want to do a mix of homes with, you know, multifamily apartment units that we could stack. So there's a lot of different options there, but yeah, ultimately, really just figuring out what it would take to get the plant into production, looking at business plans, potential owner-operators, and, you know, at the end of the day, just evaluating how this could work for the town, you know, to launch this factory again and reactivate it.
Thank you.
Questions, anyone? Roseanne?
If this were able to be revamped, how many jobs are we talking?
Well, Skyline had probably 100, 120, 110 people there at one point.
Now, isn't there a business there at the moment?
Several, there's several small, what the Kameras have done is split it up and rented parts out to different people. And so there are a couple.
Will they have to leave?
That's way in the future to answer that question, honestly, but more than likely, they'd want the whole, whoever built there would want the whole, the whole thing, but that's not... I mean, right now, he's got two renters, I wouldn't want to tell them that they had to leave.
And how far in the future are we talking?
That's a good question.
Peter, are we looking at years before there's, the assessment is complete and we can move forward?
Yeah, well, part of it is the funding timeline, so we are seeking the Vermont Community Development Program Planning Grant. That award will be announced in June, so this summer, so not far off. At the same time, we're pursuing some other grant funding to match that $60,000 grant opportunity. And then the town will be working on getting a request for proposals out there to perform the work. And the hope is, you know, by the end of the third quarter, early fourth quarter of this year, that, you know, we'll have conducted the feasibility study to evaluate reactivating the plant. And at the same time, you know, speaking with potential owner-operators that could launch the plant. And so then the next year, you know, looking out to 2025, would be coordinating with a future owner-operator and hopefully, you know, beginning of 2026, that we'd be starting to hopefully be building homes.
Can you hear that?
Okay, yes, I did.
There was, it was reported tonight on the TV that there's a 10% match. Who is responsible for that? I was on the impression it wasn't Fairhaven.
Correct. You know, from my perspective, and Joe, please jump in, but Efficiency Vermont and the EIC will be contributing to this effort in collaborating with the town. And then we are also, have been invited to submit an application or funding. We're requesting a match of the $60,000 to the Vermont Low Income Trust of Energy. And that award will be announced as well in the June timeframe. So we're hoping that we'll far exceed the 10% match and have funding that's suitable for this first phase of the feasibility study.
Thanks. Yeah, go ahead.
Is Skyline interested in coming back or another similar-type company? Or is the idea here, a study's done to see if it'll work and then the town or somebody goes and tries to find a company to buy the building and...
What we'll do was, what the grant will do was put together a report on the building. And it'll be, that will turn it into something that you can offer to prospective buyers and say, "Here's what we've got, and this is what, what is good, what is bad, and what is indifferent." Skyline is not, no, no company is involved at this point. We haven't got to that point yet. Correct me if I'm wrong, Peter, but that's the way I understand it.
Yeah, that's correct from my perspective as well. We'll be, we'll be conducting this feasibility study to, you know, really identify, you know, what the benefits are to a future owner-operator, whether that's an existing manufacturer that may own, you know, one or several other plants that are building residential units, or it's a new owner-operator, you know, that wants to take on this business. And, you know, maybe a construction management company that's doing, you know, field construction right now, what we'd call stick-built, but wants to move, you know, their crew or a portion of the crew into a factory and start deploying, you know, their housing in a climate-controlled environment as opposed to stick-building in the field. So there's a lot of options, definitely, certainly a lot of interest out there in this process already. So I anticipate in parallel with, you know, the feasibility study that we'll be hearing with folks that may be future potential owner-operators that could be, you know, a part of the process.
Does that answer your question, Sean? We will be involved with, at the end of the study, we will be involved with cooperating with any kind of, any kind of sale or sale or, you know, what's the word I want, being out there looking for people. So we'll be, we'll be cooperating, but we won't be the only one.
Yeah, and I'll just note, you know, we're working closely with Sean Kamara and, you know, is, we're just thankful to Sean for, you know, being open to exploring this opportunity. And Sean's definitely interested, you know, in this vision of not only bringing back, you know, those 100-plus jobs to the Fairhaven community, but also, you know, the opportunity to be deploying, you know, affordable workforce housing right here in Vermont, you know, via this factory again. So Sean will definitely be a part, you know, of the conversation as we move forward, as we talk about owner-operators and, you know, how this building will be used in the future.
Other questions?
Not a question, but so much it's more of a statement. So this discussion is talking about getting a grant to do a study, right? We don't even have that study money yet, so I hate for people to get too far ahead of themselves and think, "Great, 100 jobs are coming here." We don't, we don't even have the money to do the study yet. So I would just like everybody to temper the enthusiasm and remember it's a long process. It's not gonna be 100 jobs next week or even next year. So just, the town's doing what it can to move forward, but it's a long process.
The other thing that everybody should be aware of is, we use Skyline as, kind of as a shorthand. Skyline's not involved in this at all. And maybe in the future, we have no idea, but at this point, we're just calling it because it was Skyline. We're just saying, "The Skyline property, the Skyline, the former Skyline property," whatever we, whatever you want to use, but Skylines has no involvement in this at all right now. And that's probably, they'd probably like to hear that at this point. Other questions? If not, we will adjourn this meeting, unless anybody has anything else. If we don't have any other questions, then we will adjourn this meeting or end this meeting for the VCBD grant, and we have fulfilled the responsibility. Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
We will move on, if that's okay. All right, let's do that. Thanks, Peter.
See you, Peter, thanks.
We have a very long meeting tonight, so try to be brief, everyone, and we will try the same. Meeting with renters for water shut-offs, are there any folks here to talk of that? If somebody shows up, we can go back to them. Meeting with Eric, I'm not gonna be able to pronounce your name, I'm sorry.
Phanniff.
Phanniff, okay. P-H, I wouldn't have dared, sorry. A meeting with Peter Phanniff for the tax stabilization request, you're on.
Thanks, it's actually Eric, sorry.
Okay.
So first of all, I know, you have a long agenda, so I'll try to make it brief, which means I'll come fast, so if you want me to slow down, just ask me to slow down. So I am working on the sort of early development stage of a five-megawatt solar project down on Airport Road. The way solar projects work, the stars sort of have to align for a project actually to get off the ground. One of the things, first you start with a natural resources settlement to make sure there's not, you know, wetlands and things like that. Then you work with utility to see that they actually, you can plug in your project, the easiest way to think about it, like there's capacity on the line. You work with a landowner to see if somebody's agreeable and wants to lease you their land. You work with the town to supply I'm here tonight, to try to get a tax stabilization agreement so the project knows over the 20-year life cycle, it knows what its tax bill is going to be. And then you find a company to build it for a price that works for the project. So those are sort of the big things that you try to pull together. Where we are right now with this project is we have an agreement with the landowner. We have approached the utility and got a feasibility study agreement. And assuming they build the new substation, which I imagine some folks are aware of, they will have capacity, so once that's built, we can plug in. And the natural resources settlement looks good. There's, there's some wetlands, but not in the project area. Today, actually, they're doing an archaeological walkover to make sure there's not, you know, patient lumps or whatnot in the field, and you have to sort of do some recovery, that kind of stuff. And so now I'm trying to make sure the finances of the project work and that the tax bill is the largest bill on an ongoing basis of a project like this, or it can be. And assuming all that works out, then the project decides it's willing to spend the money to go part of the public utility commission to get a permit for the project. The town can participate in that permitting process, but that's sort of the avenue in Vermont is projects go to the PUC and people participate in the process with the PUC with comments and things like that. So tax, local, the local portion of taxes for solar projects can be one of three ways that can be exempted. So the state has a statute that allows a town, if it wants to, to just exempt a project where there's no taxes. Rarely done. There's a tax stabilization agreement, which is you just negotiate with the town and you come up with something that both sides think is fair. And there's a process for that, there's a state statute, and the town actually has to go to their town and vote, it's a majority vote of the town, it can either be an annual town meeting or a specially-worn town meeting. And then there's a default mechanism, which a lot of the smaller projects use to get value, and it's pretty complicated. Your local assessor has sort of a guidance from the state, and it's a discounted cash flow, which basically just says, "This project, assuming we're gonna make a certain amount of money, and so based on that, we can say the assessed value is X, and that stays level for the life of the project." The assessed value, including the town's tax rate goes up just like it does for everybody else, and then the tax bill will change from year to year. With this project, I went to your town assessor, and she met with the state, and she agreed that the analysis I did with was correct, assuming we build it like we designed it. And the local tax bill in this year will be $54,000. The state portion, the education portion, will be $19,900, because the state has decided, rather than getting this complicated assessment process, it's just a formula. It's $4 per kilowatt of capacity of a solar project. And this project is just shy of five megawatts, which equals $19,900. So I'm asking, or what I'm proposing, is this is really just sort of an introductory discussion, and then we sort of figure out how we move forward with what I'm looking for. But I would like to eventually get to a point with the select board with a sort of a memorandum of understanding that at the appropriate time in the development process, which is probably in the next six months sometime, that the town would agree to warn and elect the voters, vote on whether they want to have a tax stabilization with the project. And what I would propose is the town takes exactly what the state takes, so it's like $19,900 to the state and $19,900 to the town. And some people might say, "Well, geez, you know, the default is 54,000, $19,900, way less than 54,000." Agreed. But I can tell you that the project doesn't work at 54,000. You know, a $74,000 total tax bill for a project like this is just onerous. Wouldn't make sense as a developer to move forward if that was the kind of tax bill that you face, because this doesn't work. And to put it in perspective, the landowner on this project, assuming we build about a five-megawatt project, their annual lease payment will be between $25,000 and $30,000 a year. So the town is, even at $19,900, is getting shy with the landowners getting for leasing their land. And on top of a tax stabilization agreement, just to be clear, the town still gets what it presently gets for the land. So we're just talking about the equipment, like the underlying land, the landowner still pays the property taxes they presently pay, and Bill Bishoff, who owns the land presently, pays about, just about $3,000 a year in property taxes, and that would continue to get paid just like it normally would. So it's really just the solar stuff that goes on when they have to talk about. We'll have to answer any questions.
Questions on the board? The only, did you get a copy of our tax stabilization policy?
I did, and I apologize, Joe and I had a miscommunication, and I think it's because I was going down this road and Joe was going down the other road. Because the town has a tax stabilization policy, understood. It's really about buildings. If you look at the eligibility, it's commercial industrial buildings, it's not solar projects. So could you shoehorn, like say I came in and made this request, could you shoehorn under your policy? That'd be a question for your town attorney. I don't know if you could or you couldn't. As plainly written, I don't think you could. But even if you could, your policy, basically, for commercial or industrial buildings, it's a five-year program, that 50% of the assessed value, and it just wouldn't work for my project, to be honest with you. I understand, and I'm asking for something that's more aggressive than that.
And just, the only I have to put it against, down at our transfer station, we have some solar panels. Tell me it's $11,000 a year. For the size of the project it looks like you want, we'd be doing, at $15,000 a year, that's way lower than what I'd support personally. I, I, that's, if you're looking at the 54,000, and somehow it was able to fit into the tax stabilization, I kind of like keeping everyone on a level playing field, if I can. That, with the way our policy, if we could rewrite it or tweak it a little bit, and if it did work, it's a five-year tax stabilization, not the life of the project, the five years. And it's 50% of what the taxable amount is. That's the ballpark we'd be thinking. And I, I can't speak for the rest of the board members, but what you're describing right now, I wouldn't be supportive of it, but I, it's, it's one where if people, if our taxpayers wanted to put an appropriation request and said, "Hey, I think for the next 20 years, we'll take $15,000, and that's what the direction they want to give us, that's the direction they want to give us." I, I think that's not something I would support right now. I just, I just want to make sure you're, it's a, it's a longer putt than one might think.
It is. In the state statute that talks about how these things get voted on, you know, commercial buildings and forestry, it can only be, like the state statute only allows a town, if a town so desires, towns that have to, can only do a 10-year agreement. But rental project can be 20 years. So the state policy has thought about this, and they think of this asset as a different thing. So I understand what you're saying, and I know what your existing policy says, I get it. When you think about a smaller project and think about $11,000 of revenue, whatever, I've done 30 smaller projects of five megawatts west. I have not once come before a town and asked for what I'm asking for now, which tells you that this is just a different thing. The third, just the way the formula works, it's, it's not like apples to apples, I guess, is the best way to think about it.
So, and the only other question I have, so you were talking the Bashoff property? Are you also doing, you're not doing the solar?
No, that's a totally different project.
So you understand that whatever my answer would be, where we'd come down for you, should be the same for the other solar project as well? And you're, it just looks like this one is, again, it's asking for a lot that I'm...
And I can just tell you from my perspective, so I'm a early-stage developer. I'm not gonna build, I'm not gonna own this thing, right? I'm sort of trying to get all the pieces to align up so somebody will develop rather. And developers have to, you know, we probably have $25,000 to, already, right? Do I want to spend more money on a project that I don't think I can get financed? So you can say, "I'd rather have $54,000," and I can say, "You might have no dollars." I mean, that's honestly the balance. And if you want, I can sit with you and get into the financing of the project.
25, 25 years of 15,000, that same land, if it wasn't solar panels, if it was houses or something else, there's a whole lot more tax base that could possibly be made there.
And I've done that, and I'll share, I totally get, your thinking is exactly right. So I looked at it, and within a mile of that project, I looked at 15 residential properties and what their assessed value is, and their average assessed value is about $186,000. They sit on an average of 7.2 acres. So you take the 21 acres that this project is gonna have, and let's say there are only two and a half acre lots, and you build new houses. If you do the assessment, based on your present tax rate, and the assessed value of those properties is about $175,000, you come out to about $18,000 a year of tax revenue. So I looked at it, because that's what I was about, where you, "What if you do something else with this property?" And, and I also looked at, okay, how else about the town, what I want to think about this? Like, I don't want to sell my town short. The town of Georgia and Milton, they have a, there's a wind farm up there, and it just so happens that five megawatts are in one town and five megawatts are in the other town. And wind is a little bit different than solar, because it sort of generates more kilowatt-hours per megawatt capacity, but if you look at what they agreed to there, and they did it for 10 years, then just re-upped it for 10 years. This project, under their mechanism, will pay about $15,600 a year in taxes. So my $19,900, I didn't arrive at lightly. I kind of looked at a lot of it, and I'm happy to share all of this with you and Will, you know.
What, thank you. What kind of timeframe are you under is important to us, because I think we need to talk about this?
The good thing is it's not a rush, yeah. So GMP is about to file its petition for a certificate of public good for the substation.
It has, I'm ready.
Yeah, so they'll file in June, most likely. They'll probably get their permit by December. We wouldn't want to spend the money on preparing our permit until GMP was at least far enough along in their permitting process that we knew they weren't gonna have any hurdles. And we might even wait until they start building. It's gonna take them probably a year to build it, so let's say they come online in December of 2025. This project, if the start of line actually happens, would probably look to build either in the fall of 2025 or the spring of 2026. But, you know, working backwards, getting this, our discussion in place of agreeable, ideally, that would happen in the next six months.
That's reasonable. I mean, we gotta sit down and be perfectly honest with you. We'd be stupid to take just your assessments. So we'll, we'll look at this and have our town manager and our listeners and all those kind of give us some what-ifs, figure out, and it sounds plausible, but it also, we've got another project going on at the same time, and we have to be fair to them.
And I've reached out to them and asked if they'd had this meeting, and they're like, "We haven't done anything." We're getting there, so I don't, I don't know what they're gonna ask for, but I'm sure they're gonna ask us something.
And it, just my, my way of thinking, I don't, and I'll say this publicly, but I, I'm, I'm open to suggestion, but we have to start thinking of these projects in exactly the same way as we think of brick-and-mortar factories and things like that. They're not different in terms of, they're just providing a different service, that's all. So I don't, I'm not, I'm not overly swayed by the argument that it's a totally different business.
Another way to look at it is think about your present tax, the homestead rate and non-homestead rate, and you look at, okay, if you break that down, the non-homestead rate right now is about 2.7. And you look at the state portion versus the town portion. If you, if you do so, whatever your assessed value, whether you're a building or whatever, the town receives about 83% of the total 2.7%, and if you apply, the state has decided that $19,900 is the right amount, we're it to take under the education tax for a solar project. So if you apply that math, it magically comes back to about $17,800 a year for the local portion. That's just another way I looked at it, just to sort of like gauge it.
That's fair. Fair to hear.
But anyway, you got, Joe knows where to reach me, I'm happy to provide you with whatever I can be helpful with.
Okay. And, you know, rattle our cage every once in a while, we're gonna have to discuss this and figure out where we're at and get some particulars.
I just got one.
Yeah, sure.
My understanding that the property taxes will remain the same also.
Yeah, so this is in addition to the property taxes.
Right.
This is on top of, yeah, close to that there.
Yeah. Our stabilization says that anyways, that you, the assessed value stays the same. You only can, in our policy, you only make a, you only make the agreement on new, new stuff on the land. So whatever is theirs, if you had a building, it stays at whatever the building was. If you add into it or out on it or something like that, you can give tax stabilization to that.
But what I'm hearing, though, is you would like, you're looking for tax, just so when we go in and look and see if we tweak the tax stabilization policy, you're looking for something for more than five years. You're looking for something for the life of the project.
20-year agreement, yeah, levelized 20-year agreement.
20-year agreement.
And you don't really need to, I mean, you could keep your present tax stabilization policy as is. I mean, these oftentimes are one of, in a lot of other states are called pilot agreements, a payment in lieu of taxes. And they have forms, and, you know, you go into the town, like in Massachusetts, and you pitch, and the select board makes a decision. They don't always go to a, to a town vote. Vermont, that's just the way it is, it calls for a majority of the town vote. So really, I guess what I'm asking the select board is just to agree to warn it and let the town decide. Like, the good thing is you guys don't have to decide. What you have to decide is whether it gets, whether you put it to the town to decide.
I think we can agree to discuss it. I'm not ready to sit here and agree to warn it.
Sure. No, that's the idea, like to discuss what you want to warn.
Well, there's an election coming up in November, so it wouldn't, it wouldn't be, it would be another piece of paper. You know, that we would have to do, so. Any other questions?
He was asking where the project is. It's on Airport, on the right side of Airport.
Greenmount Mobile Manor, right across, right across here, on Airport Road. Good.
All right, thank you very much.
Eric, thanks for coming in.
Thanks, thanks for coming in. We will be communicating.
Okay, thanks again.
Thanks. Thanks. We're already up to amendments to the agenda.
In fact, I have two, if that's okay.
No.
I'm good.
Keep moving, it takes longer to argue this thing.
Uh, so I'd like to add a J under new business, appointment to the economic development committee. And, um, under executive session one VSA three one three eight two, real estate sale.
Is there a motion for that?
I make a motion, and we-
Add a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So we have some minutes to approve. We'll start with the April second.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of May second as written?
April second.
April second as written?
Second.
Thank you.
Who is that?
Chad.
Okay. Now, we have-
All those, or, or, I'm sorry, you have additions, deletions, corrections?
You wanna, you wanna do them one at a time? Go ahead, let's go, do them one at a time.
Is there any, or, the second, is there any additions, deletions, corrections? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and sixteen is next, thank you. All those opposed, I guess we're supposed to do that.
Make a motion to accept the minutes of April sixteenth as written?
Your second.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Additions, deletions, corrections, there.
That's, those are the, those are the minutes that we didn't have a quorum for, but we did have some comments, so that's what we're accepting. I just wanted to make it clear.
I don't really know if we have to do that, to be honest with you. We'll do it.
Just a, just a-
Make everybody-
Right.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, twenty-third.
Motion to accept the minutes of April twenty-third as written. Special, that was a special meeting that we did to do warrants, and-
Second.
I'll second that, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
I'll abstain.
Thank you. Five minutes for public comment.
Well, I'll say something.
See you.
Um, I wanted to thank the historical society of memorials of the Rotary, Joe, Carl Scott. We gathered on Saturday morning and cleaned about a hundred marble posts. So I hope everybody notices that we, we're trying to get the park ready for the new park and ride and for Memorial Day observance, and it's been a long process getting it painted and prettied up, but it's well on its way.
It's looking very good. You're doing good.
Thank you for all the participants, and Carl and, and Joe did some serious work. Carl did the majority of it, I, I-
He did a good seventy-five percent.
Well, it's nice to have citizens that will help. Thank you, guys. Claire?
I had somebody call me this afternoon, that she was kinda concerned, because somebody had told her that the town is going to remove the sidewalk in the corner where the, the insurance office is and the brewery there, will remove the sidewalk, and these people didn't know exactly what was gonna go there in place, but the concern was that the fire department wasn't gonna be able to put their trucks in there if it was necessary. What is proposed?
There, there are two informational meetings, correct?
Four, four.
Four, four, excuse me. Yeah. I think probably, can you give us a, just give us the list of the dates?
Oh, no, I, I don't have them memorized.
They're on that newsletter, that-
They're, they're on the-
Okay, okay. So, that will help. The motion to construct an update.
May ninth.
Get that little box down there.
Oh, my, where you can read, that would help.
That's right.
Yeah. So there are, there are four meetings. February ninth at six-thirty PM, second floor.
February, try that again.
February ninth?
Or May ninth.
February's gone, hasn't it?
May ninth, May eleventh.
Okay. May ninth, May eleventh, May fourteenth, and-
May twenty.
May twenty-third, thank you. Uh, the first two are hopefully upstairs, the jury's still out on that.
We're working on it.
Yep. But there are a lot of things to go on between now and then, and if we have to have it down here, we'll have it down here, or we'll have it in the fire department if there's enough people. But it will be in this building. All of them will be in this building, and if we have to adjourn and walk down the street, we'll do something like that.
So the third one's the select board meeting?
Yeah.
And I think they're doing one on a Saturday, so they, they're trying to get to everybody.
So the answer is, there's more to come.
However, is it proposed that the sidewalk is gonna be removed altogether?
No.
I, I don't know, I don't know what they're, don't know what they're talking about.
No.
No. I told her I would ask, and there would be an answer.
There's your answer.
Absolutely not.
But?
I told her, I said, the sidewalk is coming up, but they're gonna replace it.
Yeah.
I was wondering if you, I would like to put up a couple flyers, like at the wooden soldier and the wander man, and, um, with those dates on them. Is it okay if I, is it okay if I bring gun down here and have Joe probably in the line?
Yeah, I guess that would be fine. That would be fine.
Thank you.
We can afford to. It's not gonna be glossy colored paper.
It doesn't, I just-
You might wanna look, though, because I know that we've posted it around town already in some of the locations you just mentioned.
At the wooden soldier you have?
Oh, I don't know about the soldier, but I know the laundry mat's been posted, and there's other places, there's other spots.
Okay.
Anything else for public comment? Thank you. Moving right along. Department head report. Nate, I see you back there, I see the chief back there, you wanna go first?
We're, we're going to move forward.
Okay, chief's gonna go first.
All right, so the last two weeks have been very nice. We just had one license for driving licenses, so fifteen-two traffic violation, twenty written warnings, one parking violation, and two car crashes. We did eight fingerprints, two overweight permits. Can I give you a less of overview of what we've done? It was a light two weeks, which was nice coming into summer, we were expecting it to close. And we had a hundred and thirty-one calls in the last two weeks, and we're at twelve, twenty-two as of now.
You're still a donor person?
Yeah.
Questions with the chief?
No.
That was easy.
I think we're good, thanks.
You're gonna be interim at?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll be available.
Okay. Stealing your thunder. Nate?
We're doing, well, just starting sweeping roads, doing spring grazing, putting up ground transportation, doing all those, both have, the blacktop plants will be open, or lease pipe will be open Wednesday, so we'll be shooting for this big bit of forestry, get them ones filled in with hot nets. Oh, gotten the fountain out of barn today, cleaned it up. You got the hay on Union Street, and see there, there's gotta be a little bit more hay than that project should be, but, um, oh, gates at the airport we did, you know, we had a couple of burial down at Cedar Road, you know, one of them was out of green, and I'll give you that, if you come to the town for quite a few years, so, just wanted to mention that.
And I understand you had, you had a new arrival in your family, too.
Yes, sir.
Congratulations on that new baby boy.
Thank you. I'd be if I were a reporter, if I had any questions to ask.
How are you still awake?
Used to be.
I remember. Any questions for Nate?
No, I think we're good.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Fire department, or you wanna just talk when you get to talk?
I have not much, I don't really, I don't wanna use that keyword.
Yeah, okay. I get that.
Okay. So we're, we're coming on to the, to the end of the budget fiscal year, but I just wanted to give the board a quick update on where we sat. O one O, we're at eighty-eight percent expended, that's about three point six percent over where we should be. The burn rate is slowing down, but we're still a little high. Water, the water department, again, they're at, they're at eighty-eight percent, they're about three point seven percent over, same thing, burn rates come down, but they're still a little high, too. Sewer, sewer's doing better, they're at seventy-six percent, they're actually seven percent down, so I, I don't know how they manage that, but they're doing a great job.
Let's wind up.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
It's a brand new plant.
Yeah, new plant, there you go.
New plant, absolutely.
Yeah, and then O three O, the highway department, um, if you look, so you look at the sheet, it says they're a hundred percent spent, but that, expended, but that's because we, we bought a new truck and it got put in that, in the line item. They're closer to eighty-four percent, and they're about two percent over budget right now, where we should be this time of year. They should land pretty much right on the money, they should be right at a hundred percent expended, so, little bit over in a couple departments, right on the money in, in others.
Okay.
Uh, if you look in your, I said a sheet, looks something like that, just on the desk. Um, we're finally getting around, getting Munger Road back on our map. This is, this is just letting the board know, we're gonna be looking at that at the next meeting. We have to give a thirty-day notice to the planning commission, so I'll draft a letter and get that to the board for their signature, and that'll go-
Give it to us tomorrow?
Uh, next meeting.
Okay.
It's been a few years, it's, yeah. So, let's see, we talked about, I let the board know about hydro flushing that was supposed to start today, we put that off a week. We have a gentleman taking a test this week for his water license, we wanted to give him every opportunity to study for that, so flushing has been pushed back a week, and then the valve exercising has been pushed back a week after that. So you'll see the guys around, it's just one week back. Josh will talk about storage over at the transfer, or for the playground. Audit, so we are way behind on the audit. We should've had this audit done back in November. The auditor is gonna be here May fifteenth and sixteenth, he's gonna button up the twenty-twenty-three audit and start on the twenty-twenty-four audit. So he's gonna be here to talk, talk to me, and then we'll bring that to the board, hopefully at the next meeting.
At this coming next meeting?
The, it would be the meeting after that, not the fourteenth.
Not the fourteenth, so it'd be the end of the month of-
Is it the twenty-eighth?
Twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth, okay. I'll hold you to that.
Oh, the roof, the materials for the roof at the water plant showed up, so that project will be moving forward soon. I don't have a solid date for start or finish yet, but the materials are there. Project WorkSafe for my department's project work safe is popping in May thirty-first, so they're gonna tell us what we need to fix up to stay safe. Nate talked about street sweeping, and we're still in, we're still in the process with the wetlands department to get Scotch Hill permitted, to get that moving, so that's, that's where that sits. At the next meeting also, you'll have the first draft of the water superbudgets.
How's, how's the cemetery, where does that fit into the project, the, the schedule? I meant to ask you that.
Well, the, the guys are all back, Joe, Carl, the guys.
Oh, they're, okay, okay.
Yeah, they still doing like that.
Okay, I haven't been there in a week or so.
April fifteenth, everything's fine down there.
Good.
Players picking up, they're all right on time.
Lot of pine cones.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, they're doing good, I couldn't ask for anything better, so.
Okay. Questions for Joe, or any of the department heads that you thought of since?
I think we're good.
All right, thank you. Right back to Joe, then. Speak to us about the ladder at the South Tanks.
So, uh, I ended up talking to, it's called, it's Project WorkSafe, I call it OSHA, but it's Project WorkSafe. I got in touch with them about the ladder to see if it really was an OSHA violation. I snapped some pictures and sent it off, and they said, no, that's not an OSHA violation. What is an OSHA violation is if we climb up and get on top of the tank, because there's no barriers around the top from you falling off, or from whoever falling off. So I do have two quotes to put up a ladder, that's not an OSHA problem, but the problem is, is again, the railing on top. So I'd like to just maybe table this until Project WorkSafe comes in on May thirty-first, then they can actually look at it and tell us, you know, what we need to do, and then we can do exactly that, instead of wasting thirty-three thousand dollars on a ladder that is not a problem.
Yeah, she's reasonable.
Yeah, I mean, it's, yeah, so that's, that's where we are with that.
Is that the consensus of the board, is to table?
Yeah, I'll, I'll bring it back to the board.
Okay. That's good. New business. Appointment, uh, to the lister's office, we had a letter, Mr. Adams, I think.
Yes, Mr. Jack Adams requested to be appointed as a lister.
And if I remember quick, we've been out multiple times looking, so if you're looking for a motion, I'll make a motion that we appoint Jack Adams as a lister.
Second. That's, um, that's a typical small-town operation, it's gonna be a, a family affair there.
So it's-
But that's, that's the way it is in small towns, so there's no, no problem, no conflict, no nothing.
The church, and get back.
Exactly. All, uh, everybody understand what we're doing?
No one else wants to step up to the plate?
We need one more anyways.
We, we, we keep operating with one lister's, not a, not a good thing, we have to get at least-
That won't put her way behind. Everybody understand what we're doing? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We always have it. We have a new lister, thank you, Mr. Adams.
We're still looking for one more.
We are still looking for one more, so, step right up, it's a great job. Yeah, I know, I know, I'm looking. Okay, uh, Jim, emergency management plan.
Yeah, I'd like to thank you for signing off on that last meeting. Um, we were in a little bit of a time crunch, because, uh, they put on, May first was a deadline on it, and this year they made it a hard deadline, if you didn't have it in by May first, you didn't get any FEMA funds if you needed to have a disaster in the upcoming year. And my contact at the planning commission, Maggie O'Brien, had to go take care of her mother for blood surgery, so she was gonna be down to the last week of April, so we needed to ram it through, and we did, she's got everything, everything's submitted, and the state's got it, and we're waiting for, for them to approve it, there shouldn't be any issue there. I got a copy of it, I was gonna make a copy for everybody today, and the copier said, no, you're not. The copier said, you're gonna need toner. So when we get toner and the copier, there'll be a copy in your boxes.
Okay.
The one big thing, I say the big thing, that, that was basically housekeeping changes with new positions on the board and whatever, and new contact info, they kind of changed out. But, uh, the one thing I can report is finally, issue was last, I think it was in January, Ashley Bride, who was our shelter coordinator, spent a day at Castleton Fire having a training on shelter operations, and she soaked up an awful lot from that. We gotta sit and converse about what we need to do going forward, but look, we have somebody that's more educated than anybody's been recently on shelter ops, so that's something to, to build on. So that's something to build on.
Yep, that was the, that was the concern I had a year ago when it was so cold.
Right. Right, now at least we've got somebody that has contact information, has procedure, and knows something about what goes on going forward. And she's very enthusiastic about it.
Good. Thank you. Any questions for Jim?
No, I think we're good.
Good. Okay, road and bridge standards.
So this is certifying to the state that the town of Fairhaven will follow their, their road and bridge standards. We adopted, at least while I was here, we adopted this, these standards April sixth, twenty twenty-one, just to make sure we did adopt them. I'm sure we've done it in the past, but that's what I know we did, so I just need a board signature on that.
You need a motion?
I'm in a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt the road and bridge standards for this year.
Twenty twenty-four.
Twenty twenty-four, four thirty, twenty twenty-four.
There a second?
Second.
Thank you. Everybody understand what we're doing? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
I don't suppose the state has to have any road and bridge standards for us, you know, like money for any, any road and bridges. I don't think so.
We're just expected to follow their rules and pay for it.
Well, fundamentally, they do have, you have to adopt the standards to be eligible for.
Yep.
Okay, this will be fun. Grant match and ARPA funding distribution. There are some changes and some. So we.
Yep, so this, what we're talking about now is for the, the projects going on downtown Fairhaven, the parking ride, and then the, the park lighting. The town received, let me see. Three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in additional funding for, I'm sorry, let me back that up. For the parking ride, we received an additional two hundred and nineteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety-six dollars. For the lights, we received an additional one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars. So what this does, this freed up three, three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that the town had previously allocated toward, toward those projects. If you remember, a few months ago, it was, it was a lot of ARPA money put, put into this. It was grant match money. It was streets and sidewalks money. It was, it was a lot of funds the town came up with to keep this project moving. These extra grants really freed up all of that cash.
So that freed up, that freed up cash, would it be a true statement for me to say that the sidewalk project is fully funded now moving forward? Because we were able to take the freed up cash? Now, even though we're still going to have four meetings to discuss design and everything, there was the question of, do we even have funding? As a result of this, we're now fully funded again?
Uh, mostly. That's what this conversation is about, thank you. So the, the town did move that hundred thousand dollar match that was in the sidewalk grant across the street, that match over to the, to the parking ride pro, project. The board can now move that. I'm going to need the board to move that money back, because you've moved it. I need it moved back. It also funds, it'll also give you the opportunity to take additional monies, because the project is now more expensive, right? It's going to be one point two million dollars across the street, which is going to require an additional hundred and fifty thousand dollar match for over a million dollar project.
I'm out. I'm, I've crossed the street way too many times here. Get me, go slower. Yeah, I've got that. I've got that. Oh, that one, yes, I do someplace, and I looked at it this afternoon again.
So the, the town, I'm going to use the word stole, but that's not, it's not a hundred percent. The town moved a hundred thousand from the sidewalk project. That money needs to be moved back.
Steve, are you looking, doing one thing at, at a time? Are you, are you looking for a motion now to move the hundred thousand dollars back that we borrowed, I like it better than stolen?
Yeah.
That we borrowed from the sidewalk funding, that we can move that back now so that the sidewalk, okay?
I would take a motion.
I'll make a motion to move the hundred thousand dollar from the parking ride, that's where we put it, I think, back to the sidewalk project of grant match?
Second.
Okay, so the, the question still stands, are we fully funded at that point for both projects?
Uh, close.
Close, but there's another decision.
There's another discussion after this one.
Okay. All right, so we understand what we're doing for the first part of this. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Just wanted to, and just so, I go into sticker shock when people say something like the lighting in the park and the parking ride is one point one million dollars. But what you want to hear is that, what did the taxpayer funds actually, to make this project happen with these two grants? It was eighty-three thousand, what I'm reading here is eighty-three thousand, twenty-three dollars?
They're close, eighty-five.
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five. Eighty-five. You set a glasses. But again, it's pennies on the dollar compared to, to get all that work done there. It's a pretty, pretty good job of taking and corralling a lot of grants to make that happen. But I think Joe, Devin, and some folks did, did some pretty good work to, what you're going to see when that's done. And someone says, so what, what did it cost the taxpayers at eighty-five thousand dollars to get a one point one million dollars worth of work done? That's.
That's not bad.
Pretty good deal.
That's, that's great, and if I, to talk to that, I know we got a lot going on, but. So that's, that's seven percent of the project, so for every dollar spent downtown Fairhaven, our taxpayers spent seven pennies. It costs you seven pennies to the dollar to get that project done, the way we've done it, just so. It's, it's remarkable. And that's with the fancy lights that we had to pay all for, you know, we, we had to pay a hundred percent of the, for the fancy lights. Yeah, that's all I have for that.
So we were going to talk, we're going to talk more. Where about, about fully funding, you said we were not quite there.
You were not quite there. So that it did, back to the money that was freed up, there was three hundred thousand, three hundred and twenty-five thousand freed up. You just spent a hundred.
Okay.
You moved it back, so now you have one hundred and twenty, two hundred and twenty-five thousand. To fully fund downtown, the, the sidewalk project, you will need to add another hundred and fifty thousand to that. Because the project, because of inflation, it's, the price tag's gone up to about one point two million.
So what's our total match to be for that?
Our total match would be two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
And for how much work?
For one point two million.
One point two. So are you looking for a motion to put, what's that, two hundred?
It would be an additional hundred and fifty thousand dollars from ARPA funding.
From the ARPA. From two hundred and twenty.
I'll make a motion to put a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the ARPA funding into the sidewalk project, which will make that project fully funded.
Fully funded.
Second.
Questions, comments? All those in favor?
So I didn't even have that much money left in the ARPA project.
We didn't, but we, we took, because we, we got extra, we got extra funding from the, from the other grants. We were able to pull that money out of the, out of the sidewalk, or the parking ride and, and lighting project.
And that still leaves us some ARPA, about fifty K of ARPA funds we need to talk about tonight, of where that's going to go.
Mike, you got more questions?
No, no, I'm all set.
So is there other things that are currently going on, or that we need, that that money would be better spent on? I know we're talking about a backhoe later on.
Fifty thousand of ARPA still sitting out there.
For a used backhoe. But is there other things in town that, that money could go to, or like, we've got, you know, the lines that haven't been painted in years that we keep putting off?
Every year.
Every year.
They're painted.
Last a year. You know, so putting it off every year, I mean, you're asking for another hundred and fifty thousand on top of what was already.
Take, right, I, if, if you don't want to, if you don't want to fund the project, it can go, that's, I, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, once we get through, all we're, all we're talking about is fully funding the project for right now. I believe after the four meetings we have in May, and we hear from everybody, there's another, that, that, that discussion may change, and what you're talking about is, okay. Here's what it is, because I, I think the, the dollar amount that we're talking, that's, that's subject to change as well. Depending on the meetings and, and what you decide to do. I, so I, I hear you. I just don't know how to. If moving forward on projects that aren't fully funded, I'm not a big fan of. It needs, if we need to have more of a discussion of, do you move forward? That's a totally different discussion. But I don't think, if you, if you're thinking, if we put that money there, have we, have we got ourselves solidly in there? No, I think we're still open. We haven't committed contract, anything. But that's just me, bear in mind.
Okay.
The, the question I, the question I would have is, we're, we're into the, we're into that.
It's going to cost us, if we don't do that project, it's going to cost us eighty-five to a hundred thousand dollars that we just threw away. That's, that.
In addition to already needing to repair those.
That we have, and we still have to fix the sidewalks and everything when you're done. So, so, so I'm trying to sit here and to answer the question of, is there something we need more, I'm going.
And I don't know fully, I'm coming, coming in with this project's already, so I'm just.
There's, there is plenty of money, or plenty of places to spend every dollar times five that we have, yes. And, you know, for instance, without getting too far off the line, striping, we've used, we've used less paint so we can keep, cheaper paint, frankly, than doing the sand and the, the more permanent stuff, because we're trying to save money. And it's, it's an argument whether you're saving money if you have to do it every year or not, so.
Well, I don't, I don't think you're going to get paint to less much more here anyway. Yeah, you're not going to. Everything we did down totally, all got to be redone again.
But to your point, something's going to happen. It's got to happen.
It's kind of off the point. We have a motion on the floor right now, so. Are there any more questions specific? I don't know if we answered your question, but. But any other questions specific to the motion? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Those opposed? This is, okay, okay. So where are we there? Are we, have we spent enough money there yet?
Oh, no. So just to, just to button it up, because I, I think we'll be coming back around to this ARPA funding. So all of your projects are fully funded downtown now. That leaves you, that puts in streets and sidewalks, that moves twenty-five thousand back there for, you know, whenever. That leaves fifty thousand dollars in ARPA funds, and that money has to be allocated. Doesn't have to be spent, but it has to be allocated by December of this year, or you just lose it.
Okay.
So I don't know how we're going to find a way to spend this money, but.
Sounds like a backhoe.
Yeah, it's going to be a challenge, I'm sure.
Selectmen raises?
Yeah, that's a good use.
I just need a reiteration. So the downtown project is, is supposed to be one point two million at this point? And what was the match, two twenty-five or two fifty? I got confused.
Two fifty.
Two fifty would be our match. I'm sorry, I just got confused with all the numbers being thrown at me.
Really? Oh, you did. Uh, yeah. And I was going to ask about the ARPA, when that was going up.
I think when we get over and talk about the backhoe discussion, you're going to do that again.
We're going to go right in line?
No, no, because I'm saying that's the.
Yeah, yeah, that will, that will take care of that, yeah. Yeah, we're not going to have it for long. Ah, okay, so we're out of the grant match ARPA funding, and we're at the recreation director. We have a job description. Has the rec committee seen the job description? Have you guys got?
We have copies up here for someone.
So this is a preliminary talk. I'm sorry you didn't get it before this meeting, but there will be plenty of time to, to comment on it. For one reason, the, the actual funding for the new director starts in July first. However, we have monies at this point for baseball and all that kind of thing to cover funding till then. But, so. Questions? Did anybody see anything on the, on what they saw on the, on the job description?
I haven't had opportunity yet.
Okay. Then are there any other concerns? Let's just do, let's just do this as an open recreation, unless anybody has a problem with that, we'll just.
I mean, I guess the only thing I'd add, I would take some time to, to review this and see if there's anything that we can suggest changing. But we just like to have a little bit of, say, input as far as how the interview process goes, and who ends up working so closely with us down there.
Oh, yeah.
You know, we just, we'd like to be part of it.
Well, we're, we're not, you guys are the impetus for this whole thing. We're not going to drop you at the edge now, believe me.
I guess, just to double down on that. Admittedly, I think the thumb came off the pulse a little bit, and we've kind of jumped in all the way. And feel like we have a good feel for what we need and how far we've taken it already. And I think it's really important that, however we go about hiring this person, that we're part of that process.
Well, we're, we're absolutely committed to that. There's, there's no way. The whole idea of having you guys around is, is, well, everything's changed down there already, so.
Just to, Josh has got some pictures.
You guys want to just take it, pass them around. We really appreciate all the help. We just put in a lot of work down there, as well as Chad and Bob was down there checking things out. They're not very good pictures, I just.
Hey, I got, I got paint on my hand. Yeah.
Well, if any of you guys haven't been down behind the elementary school, take a drive down, take a look. It looks way, way better. And it seems to be utilized a lot more than it had in the past, and we're, I think we're making a lot of pretty, pretty good improvements down there.
When, when we were down there working this last Sunday, there was probably twenty or thirty kids down there playing wiffle ball, playing on the playgrounds, riding bikes, doing things that we'd like them to be, what it should be used for, you know? And the more we get down there, the better it looks, the more that snowball's going to go in that direction. And I think the hardest thing is changing the direction. You know, once you get the snowball going, you can keep it going, and I feel like we have changed the direction down there.
Well, without a doubt.
I, I apologize, I was coaching over in Clarendon, so I was a little late, so I don't know if this has been touched on at all or not, but we got to start mowing down there.
Okay. That's a question that, that a citizen asked me. Are we making the right choice getting a zero turn down there, or should we have, should we have some sort of a roller setup? Like.
Coming from someone who mows everything.
That's, that's exactly.
Zero turn is what you want. It's got to be sixty inches, has to be.
Well, what if we don't get a sixty inch? That's the other thing. We were looking at a used one that was fifty, fifty-four.
I've been looking at a lot of used ones too, because I didn't know, I knew who was going to pay for it, but I didn't know who was like, going to pick it out, so to speak. And I was just willing to kind of give a little input on it. You would be wasting your money, and it sounds funny, the six inches, but that's going to take somebody twelve hours instead of seven or eight hours if you get a fifty-four. And the price difference from someone who's bought twenty mowers in the last twenty years, you want to get a sixty inch. You can get just as good a mower, or the same price as a fifty-four or sixty inch, whatever money you're going to spend, we can get a sixty inch for that same amount of money. You know what I mean? It's not like you're pricing yourself out when you go to a sixty inch mower. If you're going to spend seven thousand dollars on a mower, eight thousand dollars, six thousand dollars, you can get a sixty inch. You don't want to get a fifty-four inch.
So this was one of our, our reasons for coming here was, we, we had a meeting in the fall, and I thought everybody was on board as far as taking ten thousand dollars and putting that into equipment. and putting that into equipment for us to maintain that facility down there so that it didn't become the town's responsibility for people.
It's always gonna be the town's responsibility, no matter what.
Well, it is, but we need, obviously if we're gonna be the ones maintaining it, I thought we had an agreement as far as having equipment to be able to maintain it. So obviously, I guess I'm mistaken, but I thought.
No, we agreed we would get you a mower.
Yeah.
And that last fall.
And it was agreed upon to take ten thousand dollars out of that fund for a mower, a trimmer and a blower for down there. Now, we've been told that we don't have that available and we don't have, we don't have the equipment, obviously. And we've got games going on currently, so we need to be maintaining these facilities.
You actually need that mower.
Well, for the money to go buy the mower, yes.
Where are you at Nate with that?
Getting calls, you know the ones I got were just a fifty-four.
Well, we, do we, we have a mower that we could get down there and mow with?
No, you have one to mow with, you guys are.
Yeah, oh no, yeah, we can, yeah.
Okay, but you haven't bought, you haven't bought another mower?
No, I haven't bought one.
Okay, so, can you get us what you're looking at?
Yeah, absolutely.
And if we're talking about the same money, what do we care? But, we're.
It's the same money, doesn't matter. You go and get a used mower, it'll be the same price.
I don't think we wanna use mower guys. I think we wanna get new.
Well, I'd like to get new everything, but.
Well, but you were saying.
We can't.
More get beat.
I understand that.
If, just.
If we had a budget, we could give you guys a choice. If you guys wanted to be the ones that write the check, you can say this one or this one. But either one of these will work with us. We just need to know how much money we're dealing with and what we're able to get.
Because I, we realize the new budget doesn't start, but the idea when we were at this meeting that it was gonna come out of the year we're living in.
Currently in, I thought we had ten grand.
Yeah, ten grand. And we can get, you can get a new, here's the deal, for ten grand, or say nine, you can get a used sixty inch, or you could get a new sixty inch for that same money, it just depends on the brand. You know what I mean? You can get a brand new sixty inch Cub Cadet for forty-five hundred bucks at Home Depot. Or you can get a used John Deere for nine grand. We just need to know the money and who's writing the check and we'll find you the mower. And then if he wants to check it out, you can check it out, whoever wants to check it out. We just wanna be able to mow down there. I mowed on Sunday, which is not a big deal, but. We're just following up on our meeting that we had before.
I do remember that, and that number was there, so tell me what's wrong with it.
So, we remember or don't remember, I. It's not enough. So I can't say ten thousand dollars without having some.
So we do have a, and Rich, your neighbor, we have an asset down at Salem, that's a salesman.
So if I could make a suggestion. And in the minutes, it actually says this, that I thought this was an awful idea. But since we're moving on to mower purchases, there is fifty thousand dollars in ARPA funds and we won't have to steal money from Public Works.
Well, except for where we're gonna steal money for Public Works for a backhoe later today.
Okay, six of one, half a dozen of another. Okay, fair enough.
Well, I thought we had that discussion.
But before you start spending new money, even though the minutes don't say we made the decision. Pretty clear in my mind, we made the decision. And that it was ten thousand dollars and it was gonna be a mower, so if we need just, what do you need to say? You got, here's what you have. Get a mower. Cause that's why I thought, how we left it. That's, that's how.
And I promise you, it was set. And I remember Joe not liking it, but it was voted out.
It was, and so I don't think we need to vote again.
No, you need to vote again.
We need to vote again.
I can't spend money out of those funds without a vote. And it, I remember, doesn't protect me from the.
Is it, what fund am I taking, making the motion on?
Ten thousand dollars from, well, wherever you want, Public Works or from ARPA.
Where?
You said Public Works last.
Buy a mower for use at the rec field.
It'll be used wherever we need it.
Yes, and if you wanna come.
Exactly, and that's why I think Public Works, I'll make a motion that would take ten thousand dollars out of Public Works. Is it reserved? Reserve for a mower, purchase a mower.
Not to exceed ten thousand.
Not to exceed ten thousand.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Mr. Second today?
That's it, I'm gonna roll.
Nate?
How do you guys wanna do with the fuel? For the, when they buy or when they buy a mower?
We can pay for it in the rec camp. Yeah, the rec can.
Equipment reserve fund. So what do you mean by?
I was just gonna ask, I have to know because of punching a number or something.
Yeah, the, yeah, okay.
If we're using it down there, we'll fill it. You guys take it, you guys do what, you do it with your mowers.
Yeah, I would very much be very leery of us trying to split that up.
Right, keep track. The only reason for when we do budget next fall, if you know what you spend for gas and you're putting your budget together, what it's gonna cost roughly. Right now, we're probably ballparking, so keeping track, whatever, however you do, I'd say keep track of it so we can figure it out and we put the budget together.
You got it. You got it. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, it's a town piece of equipment.
Yes.
The town will fuel it and the theory is that it'll be full, if you need it, come get it, whatever. However, I don't know where it's even gonna be stored at this point, but.
Josh was gonna store it at his place.
Yeah, okay.
And once you get a.
Well, is that viable for you? If you need it, can you get to Josh's? You know, I just wanna make sure that this is.
Probably have much room.
Yeah, that's, okay, so, okay, so you're gonna, you're gonna take that responsibility, we're just.
I've got a bay down below that we don't use, that it can be stored right in. And it's right around the corner from all the fields and it's easy, so.
And if someone was to become, that liked that for whatever reason, we do have a storage container coming. That we could store, yeah, so we have a storage container down there that we have donated.
Yeah, we didn't have a place to store any of the baseball equipment or anything this year, so for a delivery fee, we were able to use a storage container for a few months anyway from Storage Solutions. The new business in town is very, and allowing us to use that for just a delivery fee for a few months. Which will be good, get us through the baseball season anyway. So that is actually now beside the bathrooms that are down there, the ones that need to be fixed.
That's getting to be player comfortable, so.
And just quickly, and Joe's part of this too, I gotta just say, the town has been awesome. There's been so many people that donated to us recently. On the store right down here, you guys know who it is, twenty-five hundred bucks. And we've been, people have been very gracious with their time and people are really excited about getting that place cleaned up down there. People are really excited about it.
It looks really good down there.
Troy was able to get GE to donate four thousand dollars, so we were able to at least spend some of that on the painting of the dugouts and make them look a little bit better and everything. I guess my next thing, the other reason that we're here is, Homestead Fence is gonna be putting in the fences on the softball field and the Little League field for the home run fences. We've got them ordered and they'll be in hopefully within a week and they'll be in the ground, so we'll have a place to display all the sponsors around the fences.
Are you actively selling sponsorship?
Yes, oh yes. So, the cost of this, so, my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, Joe, we've got eleven thousand dollars in the field maintenance fund currently down there, is what I was told the other day.
Yeah, so I actually went and I tallied up all of that. There was, there's actually a little bit more. So there's five thousand for field maintenance, fifty-six hundred for the, if you was to hire somebody or whatever type of maintenance. But then there was also the, the town voted eight thousand to repair the fences on that facility. And all of that money is still sitting there. We had some damage that we ended up having the insurance company pay for, so we didn't need to use that money. So there's quite a bit still sitting there for.
So we've done a ton of work as you can see down there and so those fences are gonna run thirteen thousand. Our rec committee will, is more than happy to pay sixty-five hundred for one of the fences if sixty-five hundred could come out of that fund to pay for the other fence to match us there, so we've got the room. And then we also, we haven't got a bill yet from Haddockus for all the infield material. There are four loads that were dropped off down there, it's gonna be somewhere between three thousand and thirty-five hundred based on last year's prices on it. So, we're hoping that the money that was set aside for the field maintenance stuff can take care of one of the fences and for the infield material down there.
The Haddockus bill showed up in my office.
Oh, it did, okay. Is that, am I close to what it was?
I think it was almost four.
Almost four, okay.
I don't.
So, yeah, if, just wanted to present that and then hopefully that works for everybody and we can continue moving in the right direction down there.
Doing good work.
So, am I finding the mower or are you guys?
What's that?
It don't matter to me.
Doesn't matter to us.
We can find it Nate, so you don't even have to worry about it and I'll just run it by you to see if you know anything about them or whatever else.
Yeah, like if you just knock it down and stuff like that, just tell them.
Sure.
Absolutely.
We don't pay tax.
Absolutely.
Right, and we don't pay tax and make sure there's a purchase order and it's really.
We won't do anything without talking to Joe.
Yeah, we just need to know if we find the one, we wanna be able to get it, we need to be able to say, come to the town and say, can you guys write a check for this? Cause this is what.
It's, there's, we made that motion, so.
For the town, yes, but. So, so working with the town is a little different, right? I'm held by what the auditors are expecting of me and we've spent sixty-five, or are expecting the town to spend sixty-five hundred dollars on fence. I didn't get my quotes, so now if the auditor pulls that bill, they're gonna say Joe didn't follow the rules. If we don't get bids or if we don't get quotes for mowers and we just go buy one and we don't get our quotes and turn them in, they'll say Joe didn't follow your rules, so. Over five thousand dollars is rules I need to follow and if I don't, then I just, I guess.
Is this the way to turn around? So if I gave you a quote and said that this is what you get, we can?
Stable the rights of the purchase order. I checked these, this is the one that we want.
Okay.
And if you get more than one quote, even better.
Yeah.
And we, you know, that we can, so we can take the lesser.
Brand new mower, you know, you might wanna shop it around the same thing, but you know, if it's a used one, you're gonna have a tough time getting three quotes on that used mower.
But, coordinate with Nate and Joe and we will, we will be there.
You guys are doing, I know I come across grumpy with this, but you guys are doing a really great job. It does look really good down there.
We've had a lot of help.
It was the original Sunday, it's not last Sunday, but the Sunday before. Just to give a little example, the seventh and eighth grade girls came in and they showed ownership and they heated their own dugouts. So they were all having a good time with it. Some parents came through and then that was noticed and the seventh and eighth grade boys popped over and started comparing, started, so.
Nice.
As you guys know, like one of the acronyms, the SOAR program at the grade school is to have some ownership, so. That's what we're looking for here to create buy-in. The better we still stay on task down here, it's gonna be, the community's gonna start seeing it. This is a big, this is huge for us, like, there's no other place in this town that wants it to work, it's for kids too, so.
One thing about the buy-in end of it is, it may help with the vandalism because kids talk to themselves, they know. And they probably know who's the, with pinpoint accuracy, who's messing up or who would mess up, so.
And Luke also, just to piggyback off what he said, and I talked to Josh a little bit before we came down here. Last Sunday, we were finishing up the, I'd say what, three of the fences that we wanted to call it. And at the end of the day, the boys were all just down there playing wiffle ball on the fresh fields and that was a great feeling. Guys are working it out, so. Like these guys said, please come down and just check it out.
It looks good.
And we've had so much support from other businesses and I mean, I can't name after, there's tons of them, but I mean, Brown's, Corey's, Slade's donated tons of material, Avian's has donated tons of equipment. You know, that down there, it's just been, it's been incredible the amount of people, I mean, that have just put in so many hours of their time and businesses that have passed the businesses, tons and tons and tons of money. But they're all behind it, you know? They wanna see it moving in the right direction, so it's been incredible the amount of support we've gotten.
Frank Campbell's done thousands of dollars of work down there this month, thousands.
Thanks, Josh.
Thousands or like tens of thousands.
Tens of thousands. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
I hate to admit it, but even the trees being gone are.
It really does.
Thank you guys very much.
Thanks.
Okay, let's fire a fire drill.
So, enough of this piddly, yeah. Enough of this piddly money. Let's talk like real money. We haven't spent any good money today.
We're gonna have to sidewalk.
We're going on the big screen.
You're getting there.
Hurry up.
Yeah. Hey Jim, where did we land with line striping? Did they get back with us?
No, I gotta fire that off. Stuff like that, I had to get that. This week's project.
Mike reminded me, like we didn't. It's coming. Give that cord a wiggle.
You need a tool?
No, 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 it's not getting a signal. It's not getting a signal, it's plugged in there.
No, usually it's that one right there, oh, there it is.
Still no signal.
I'll tell you Wayne, you're S O L.
I don't suppose we have an IT department?
I am your IT department.
That's coming. Used to be Jim, but. Wait, let me see your.
Jim was our IT department.
Wayne, let me see your.
Can we do, right, can we maybe get this one?
Yeah, no, it's. Are you thinking about it? That's a good one.
Should be on the.
HDMI one is what it's sitting in here.
Okay, there we go.
Cause we might have been on HDMI two.
Victory.
You saying about giving the IT.
Jim's the IT guy.
Still there.
Still got it?
Hang on.
Come on, come on, come on.
Broken. Man, it's a drainer. Okay, everybody go out in the hallway, come back in.
Okay, old school this.
Is it in, plugged in one, plugged in two?
It's plugged in one, do you wanna try?
If Joe's works, can he email it to?
Yeah, I got something back.
There we go. We, we, okay, plan B. Plan B works, good.
Oh my goodness, listen to all of this.
Uh, the one labeled M ninety-two D.
Well, I'm gonna let you drive.
Okay.
M ninety-two D.
Excellent.
Just that one you're doing. I'll let you drive.
Oh, all right.
Great, that's it, oh, evening.
Hey Chief.
Okay, just to let you know where we're at after our positive vote there in March. We've been dealing with Pat Shaw from Lakesbury Fire Apparatus out of New Hampshire. They represent HME and they also represent Alexis. With what's been happening with the fire apparatus industry since our last purchase, I can basically sum it up by saying there's been a tremendous amount of consolidation. Four of the manufacturers that we dealt with the last time around when we bid out a truck are now owned by the same conglomerate. They will build you a truck with every name you want on it, but they're all basically cookie cutter. Their pricing was running seven fifty to nine hundred and fifty thousand and I'm seeing delivery times of three years plus. So, dealing with Pat, he was, was talking to us about Alexis, which is one of the few remaining small manufacturers of fire apparatus around Illinois. Holtney just bought a mini pump or basically a mini engine rescue from them and they do twenty to thirty rigs a year. They've been around since forever. Quality work and we've been working together on a spec that squeezes as much functionality into a piece of apparatus as we can get with a cap. And this is where we're at at this point. We're looking at a Freightliner two-door chassis. We're limited in chassis size because of the size of our firehouse. We gotta be able to get it in the door. So, that limited us an engine size because in order to go bigger, you had to go bigger chassis size and it was too big to fit in the door. This piece is upping our pump size from our current twelve fifty G P M to fifteen hundred, which matches our other engine rescue that we currently have. We're upping our available water from fifteen hundred that we currently have to eighteen hundred gallons on the truck. They were originally looking at two thousand. We had to cut a little bit of water because we said we had enough of a hose. We had to carry fifteen hundred feet of five-inch hose that we currently carry. This piece does that. We've upped our dump size to a ten-inch square Newton dump, which is faster than the six-inch round one we have now, which also dumps either side. We've got a port-a-tank on this on a hydraulic rack that is designed to be, instead of being square, it's rectangular, it's a single lane. This has a rear suction on it. The idea is the port-a-tank could drop behind the piece on Arrowback Road in Tomstown, up in West Haven, or up in Benson. We're designing this for our area.
Scott Hill Road.
But, you know, Scott Hill Road, narrow road, one-lane roads, takes up less room running a tanker shop. We've got a pre-pipe master stream device on this truck, so one man can flow the capacity of the pump if necessary. Same pre-connect hose package as we have on the current piece. We're sacrificing a little bit of compartment space, but we can't have everything and again, this is part of a package deal. The next step in the process is gonna be replace our brush truck with a crew cab, automatic. And the idea would be to go more storage space on that for some of the equipment we're currently carrying and we won't be able to carry. We'll be able to carry what we need. Some of the stuff is basically been made superfluous with what's on this. But there is a mounting allowance for equipment that's carried on this. It's got a standard ladder complement for an engine. We have to carry a thirty-five footer because we don't have an aerial in town, so one piece has to have a thirty-five on it. This has a thirty-five foot three section, a sixteen-foot or, what do you, sixteen-foot roof and an attic ladder. This will have a one-twenty inverter. We're currently looking, it's spec with a thousand watt. We're looking at the possibility of a two thousand watt. The difference of price isn't a lot, but that's, that's one thing that remains, is ironed out completely. We miss anything there, Wayne?
I don't think so, from a functional standpoint. I don't, I don't believe so.
Yeah. All the scene lighting on this truck is twelve-volt LED, scene lighting, three hundred and sixty degrees around, plus two telescoping towers.
That's what allows us to get away from a hydraulically driven generator and go to one-twenty for inverter.
Basically, go on the one-twenty for fans or hand tools or some, you know, low wattage loads, basically. And as that sits today, we're looking at, what's it, five ninety-seven, eight hundred or something?
Nine, my book's right there on the floor. So, as of tonight, we're at, I can't believe it.
Five ninety-seven, eight thirty-four.
Uh, the voters had approved up to six hundred. So, the one thing chief did not cover, upcoming new emissions regulations.
Yeah, we're in a bit of a, a bit of a bind time-wise on this because as we were with the last piece, we're facing a new round of EPA emissions on diesel engines. And I know we saved ten thousand dollars on the E, on the E R when we bought it, cause we were able to get an old engine before the new ones, they, before they ran out of old ones and had to sell us new ones. We also saved four inches of cap width because of the, because of beating that, that emissions upgrade. This time around, they were ballparking the difference of price at around forty thousand dollars, but that has recently, more recent information has come down the pipe and they're looking at a fifty to eighty thousand dollar upcharge on your chassis and that in regulation goes into effect. So, we wanna get this buttoned up before we don't have a choice on, on engines. So, that's basically where we're at. So, I guess what we're looking for is some direction on, you know, where, where can we go and, you know, are we barking at the right tree?
Money would be allocated July first, but can you order without?
Yes, yeah, we have to have a hundred and fourteen thousand and something when the chassis is delivered to them.
And we've got enough in our reserve to cover that.
We're looking at five hundred, five hundred and fifty days.
Yeah, currently five hundred.
About a year and a half delivery time, which is about half what I'm saving from a lot of other bigger manufacturers.
So, so you order this, this comes in, what do we need to, to drop it off? What do we need to do to make it ready to head out to its first fire?
Just, well, basically what we'll do, because there is a, a twenty thousand dollar allowance in the, in the spec for equipment mounting, we will ship everything to New Hampshire.
Okay.
And it will come back and mount it, just like we did with the last piece.
When we get that truck back here, it's just a matter of training on it.
Yeah.
There's a training.
Load hose on it and train it.
So. There's a training allotment in the price as well for factory onsite training.
So, we've worked on this. We had a truck committee. We've worked on this for what, a year?
Yeah, we've been about a year on this. Again, this is.
And the people on the truck committee combined years of over a hundred years of firefighting experience, so it's something that we really put a lot of thought into. What's the best for the town, what's the best for, you know, every, every situation and there isn't a night yield truck for every situation, obviously, but between this and what's out there, we got it pretty well covered.
This is, this is designed.
We probably got a, we got over a hundred hours of meetings and just the design and stuff on this.
This is designed in our first two districts to be our second piece out. It's designed as a water supply piece to back up our attack truck. And it's also going to be our mutual aid truck, cause when you go out of town, we need water, we need large diameter hose, we need people. So, the concept being, we're cutting down on people on this particular piece, but down the road, you know, in the not-too-distant future, we'll look at picking that back up when we replace the brush truck with a crew cab.
Let's spend this money first.
Right, but I just said, maybe it's just a matter of, you gotta look at the big picture to see, see how it fits together, we have, fits into the whole thing.
So, it looks like you're, you've got your funding, you've got the truck you want, you just go make it sell or are you?
Basically, yeah, it's like if, if I can get him to draw up a contract, right?
I guess what we're looking for is the board to authorize this as a single source purchase.
If you wanna authorize the town manager to execute it, then we won't have to come back to see you.
You're doing, you're doing that job?
Same argument you're gonna have with the auditor, are you gonna be, are we okay this?
No, this is, if you, if you.
We've already done our.
And this is a very unique piece of equipment.
Okay. Okay.
Right. And we are looking to replace a piece that's not roadworthy. And, you know, we're gonna have to see if we can do a little finagle in to get that, to link that through for a year.
So, you're looking, you're looking for, let me see if I've got that, steel list, cause I've got a number on that?
That is not the current price.
That's not the current number?
Five ninety-seven, eight thirty-four.
That's, that's the current, that's the current price.
Five ninety-seven, eight thirty-four. That's as of five P M. tonight.
Okay, let me see if I take a pass at this motion. I'll make a motion that we authorize Joe to single source this new engine for five ninety-seven, eight thirty-four. I didn't say not to exceed because it's probably gonna exceed and we don't need to come back again.
Don't say that.
All right.
All those in favor?
Before you, just to clarify, what will probably happen, what will happen, is once the contract is signed, okay, we'll have a pre-construction conference and there may be a couple little details that are out on the tire gal, twenty bucks here or ten bucks the other way and, you know, anything that's, that's in the end, that's, cause they'll, they'll give you a price as an approximate, but it's not gonna be ten thousand dollars more, it may be forty-five dollars, but.
It's gonna move a little.
Right, right, but that's, you know, that's basically dotting i's and crossing t's, so.
Well, you got six hundred thousand, so you got three thousand to play with.
We got some.
I shouldn't say that out loud, but.
So, you're gonna call the question?
Bureaucrats being bureaucrats. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Let's go get a.
Buy your truck.
Let's go get a new truck.
Thank you guys for.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
You need it. Thanks for what you're doing for us, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I looked out in the crowd and I saw a guy with a tie and, who the hell's that?
What's he trying to impress?
Okay, well, let's see, I don't know if we, if we left any money for the bank.
Yeah.
No, no, money's gone.
We left, we left money for the bank. You don't want to be the last, Nate, you wanna be the first one before you start giving money away, cause there's less, less money to give away as the night goes on.
Oh, we.
Well, the mower guy jumped in front of me.
Yeah, so, yeah, there, you know, there's no more money. So, talk with about backhoes.
Backhoe.
The backhoe currently right now is out of service, should be stabilized or uninstalled. I, I don't want to see putting any more money towards one of our, our four. If you put a six thousand dollar piston up, I think within a year, now, in number six, the only one they have, period. So, first round's releasing it out.
Now, that, that backhoe is twenty-seven years old or something like that?
Ninety-four.
Somebody do the math.
It's almost thirty years old.
Thirty, yeah.
Yeah, thirty years old, yeah, you're right.
Doesn't overcount any money, that's for sure. I have a backhoe that saves the town money down there for the transfer station that we use as a compacted demo. It saves on pulling charges, I think, four or a hundred fifty to two hundred pull. And since the backhoe's been down, we, I think we already tripled that so far. I think we're very weak now for pulls.
And you're looking, you're looking at seventy, seventy grand used?
I was going for eighty grand for used.
Why not?
Is it different?
What's, what's new cost?
Thanks, guys.
No, depending on brand, would I, down around, probably a hundred twenties to, um, a hundred and forty.
I mean.
I know.
Yeah, so you spent eighty on a used one and you spend additional thirty, forty and you've got.
Right, the only, the only question, go ahead. You go ahead, something?
Yeah, so the, the reason there is a number in the, on the cheat sheet is compared to what Nate said. Nate and I got in touch with the state today and they have their emissions grant opening up next month and they'll pay, like Holtney did. They'll pay twenty-five percent of a, of a new piece of equipment.
So, that's, that's.
A twenty-one, a twenty-one or newer, twenty, twenty-one or newer, so.
Right, and Nate, and that program gives you way more than you would ever get resale or in this case, it's a dead machine, so you're not getting scrap.
Yeah.
So, they'll give you.
Twenty-five percent of the purchase, so a hundred and twenty thousand, you pay whatever, they give you twenty-five percent of that.
Right, I mean, we, one new, probably nobody remembers, the backhoe that's out of service now, was bought thirty years ago, was that brand new then or is that used?
Brand new then.
I mean, you got thirty years out of, you know?
Yeah. So, can, can we afford, can we find money for a new?
With all that, with that said, are you saying if, if we had a, you were saying a hundred and twenty?
I don't have like accurate, accurate.
No, I'm just, I'm trying to get a.
Around, I'll say a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and thirty-five will get you a new machine, depending on brand.
Because I, the only reason I ask the question is I looked and saw how we were gonna come up with seventy thousand with, by taking ARPA funds, public reserve, sewer reserve, water reserve. With the percentage that, if we got the program with the state, what, what's the shortfall? I, I guess I'm trying to figure out how much more.
I mean, if it was a hundred thousand, if it was a hundred thousand dollar piece of equipment, you'd have to pay seventy-five thousand.
And we have seventy thousand, Tom.
And you have seventy thousand.
Seventy thousand here, so that's.
You haven't touched any of the ARPA funds, the other fifty, you know, that's only a portion of that.
I can talk to Joel too and get what they paid for that machine.
I think, like I said, in the text right now, but I think he was around a hundred twenty-five and that's John Dear for town.
And that was with the grapple or whatever on the back and they, the thumb, and they said they would never buy another piece of equipment without the thumb. That makes. And that's, and, and the fresh price goes, adding that thumb's pennies and that's a huge advantage.
Go ahead, Gary.
I mean, we, we've got to a new piece of equipment now, but do we need a new piece of equipment to smash the container, right? We, we have, we have an excavator, which we, we use it for ditching. We're not gonna use that backhoe to be pounded through frost anymore. We got the big front loader, which is gonna do the heavy work. Do we need to spend a hundred and twenty thousand dollars on a piece of equipment that's gonna be used at the transfer station? Is, is my question.
Where else do we use it?
Do we use it for ditching?
It's also a backup machine, so we can look at it that way.
Right, that's a backup excavator.
When our bucket loader was down the last store, is that the one we brought up to help clear it?
Yes, it is.
I don't tell you, in the village, that's what we, that's our main piece of equipment is the backhoe and that, it's a nice piece to have. It's a very versatile, all-around machine.
Are you doing all the ditching with the, with the, with the excavator?
Will we, crazy question, but let me ask you, I, when the bucket loader that goes down to transfer station quite a bit now, well, getting this new piece of equipment, keep that bucket loader more.
We will if we get the one with the thumb on it.
No, that, see, see, I'm, I'm looking to where I'm safe, cause that, that will save us having to run around.
But it is, it's a gravel.
Pick up anything with that.
So.
It's a huge advantage.
I don't know if that.
The biggest, the biggest problem with, with the bucket the way it is now, you, when you're running into shingles and stuff like that, it, it doesn't take very many and it, it's hard to get underneath them. It's hard to get them in the bucket and that's why they use the bigger one.
It's, what is, okay, and the other question that comes to mind is, we, we got a capital plan of when we're gonna replace thing. If we get this new instead of used, when does the next piece of, big piece of equipment, because this is probably gonna take and, take our reserve money and pretty much take everything, so I just wanna make sure, are, are you comfortable with taking everything and getting a new one here? Or do we have something up on the capital reserve budget? That's, that's what I was looking for in mind.
John Dear, this, this bu, this backhoe is a ninety-eight, not ninety-four. Twenty-six, we're back to the twenty-six, but.
So. Was, is this on schedule for a twenty-twenty-seven replacement?
That's correct.
Does, the backhoe, these are based on first payments? I see.
So, you would borrow all this money?
Uh, yeah, I mean, if we don't have to, it'd probably be.
It'd be nice not, with the, not to have to borrow much.
Sure.
It would.
So the, the initial thought with, with this grant, with this twenty-five percent grant, it makes it even easier to do, cause all departments will use this, right? Water, sewer, D P W, they're all using it, it only seems fair to take a little bit, not, you know, not the whole, yeah, a little bit from everybody to get us to where we need to be.
Right, cause my understanding is that they do a lot of the digging for water and sewer, right, for every year? Right, oh, yeah, and I had had a chance to talk to you, you weren't there the day, I think you were out maternity leave, but I did go down and chat with the guys, and I saw the machine, so.
Again, I'm just looking, I'm just looking for, if we need, as long as we're good on a capital plan that says we, cause, and take everything down as low as we're taking here.
Yeah.
It's gonna be all more, we're gonna, you borrow a lot of money, or just not buying, if you're comfortable with where we're sitting with that stuff.
First, the first question actually is, do we wanna buy new, or do we wanna buy used? There's, I didn't, at one point you were sounding like you wanted to buy used, and then your last statement kinda sounded like maybe that was the way to go.
No, I was, uh, you know, I understand that, like, Public Works, they need this equipment, but from my perspective, not riding in the equipment, like, I'm, I'm not the equipment operator. I don't know if we get enough use out of it to justify buying a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar piece of equipment, just to crush the container down, you know? That's, that's my opinion, as a guy that's just behind the desk.
It does a little more than that. It's a backup machine for snow and ice control. If you've got a water dig where the excavator can't get in, you may be able to get in with this backhoe easier.
Maneuverability too, you don't have to load, you don't have to load it on a trailer and haul it down and back before the transfers, you can get it from the town garage and go, or you got a dig you gotta do somewhere.
With the grapple hook, it'll save on, run a big loader tool to dump it, land it for one every day, three, four times a week, whenever they do that. And.
Fill and truss up with salt and sand.
My feeling, buying used versus new, in the long term, we're better off getting a new.
And that's basically what I heard. You, you drive, I, I look for people who work with them too.
Village, we don't have a trailer, anywhere that backhoe goes, we drive in the village. And we, and we'll make multiple trips back and forth on a project with it, and that's nice. And you having your diesel background that I found out about recently, you know, that, you know, used.
With, with all the ditching that needs to be done in this town, that we'll be taking probably the excavator to do the ditching. If we ever get staffed up, where you could be doing ditching, and you had something else you had to repair.
Right.
That, that's where I would see this piece of equipment.
You could double down on your ditching, if you had.
Or get two?
You could have two ditch crews going.
Two ditch crews, well, that's what I was thinking, I, when we were looking at the number of ditches that we need to have done, you could do two ditch crews working at the same time to get us back on schedule.
So I have two questions. And just, I'm pleading complete ignorance here. But a lot of times you can get a car that, you know, you can get, like, this year, you can get a twenty twenty-three that is hugely discounted, because it's a twenty twenty-three, and we're twenty twenty-four. He hasn't been driven, you know, just like test drives and stuff.
Well, it's devalued, it's devalued.
It's been devalued, but it's still pretty much brand new. Is there anything that can, I mean, can?
If you can find one, yes.
Okay. Now, my other question is, is this piece of machinery something that could be used with working on the downtown project?
What?
On the downtown project?
So that's totally out, so.
Not gonna be our, our equipment doing it.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I was just.
Then you're getting insurance problems, if you're, but yes, no. Yes, no.
So.
Um, yeah. So I, I still don't, I, I see two yeses for new.
I see new, new.
I have to, I have to trust what folks are saying, that, uh, it's a need, I, I, I don't know how often it's operated. Uh, I think if we were going, if we're going to purchase it, we, we go with the new, but I think we look first in that twenty-one to twenty-three range instead of twenty-four. That still qualifies for grant funding.
Mm-hmm.
I agree, I agree with that, if we can find one.
Yeah.
Definitely agree with that.
My question is, what's, what are you guys running for equipment now? What brands are you running? So what's your excavator and loader?
Cat Escalator, Cat's Gist Gear, New Sun Voder, Bobcat Skits Gear, John Dear Backhoe.
So you've kinda got a mix of everything. So I know, like, our plan or down there is they're trying to get all the same brand, so when they have to get serviced, they have one company come in and they can look at everything all at once, so you get more bang for your buck on that end, so, if you got a mix.
No, it's definitely a mix down there, I mean, which ain't a, it's not a bad thing.
Right.
You save money on certain things.
Right. Yeah.
Sounds like everyone agrees we need to get a backhoe. Now, we're, we're just down, and, and the, the big thing is the difference between, I was buying, where, where am I? I, I've been both places, I started, I started at the used, and listening to the conversation, I'm at the, what got me to the new was saying I could get twenty-one percent or something, yeah, I, I, off of that, because then it makes it.
Well, that hits your sweet spot, you, you're a numbers guy, so.
I, I, I'm saying, I'm, I'm, I'm there now.
It makes sense, it makes sense, if we do it that way.
Right.
If we can.
If, if, if we can find one in the.
So at this point, at this point, um, all you need is authorization to go look, at this point, right? You don't need to spend, you, you don't know what money to spend, so you're not.
Uh, so yeah, the grant doesn't open until, well, let's ask, do you have a, a number? Like a not to exceed number?
Joel's looking at an email right now, what he paid for John Dear. I don't know, I don't wanna say your number, it'd be wrong though.
Look, it could be like a not to exceed a hundred and twenty-five. Would that buy, you don't know?
Would that buy you?
I'd rather do a hundred and thirty-five, cause I don't know. Well, you know what I mean?
You gotta do a hundred and fifty.
Not to exceed.
I don't think it was that much, like, Joel's texting me right now, and he's just looking through an email, and they just pop theirs.
Uh.
I don't even think it's your phone.
Not even, yeah, I remember when they decommissioned the other one, I think that was last summer.
I actually think they, they brought theirs, I don't know, they sold it to somebody, or maybe they dumped their old one, but. I don't wanna, like, like buying a brand new backhoe, I, you know, I'm not gonna say no to that. I don't wanna shoot myself in the foot, cause, I mean, there is other equipment that is on the agenda that is coming out, so I don't wanna come in here, in like, oh, sweet, you know, I got a new backhoe, and come in here, you know, five months down the road, or six months, or whatever it is.
And say I have to have this, and we don't have that one.
Have the truck that's, I forgot mine, she and Joel gave me for the capital plan, but.
Yeah, there's, there's two trucks that were up this, your truck, the seventeen international, and then the Dodge, five fifty, or fifty-five hundred.
Five hundred.
Yeah, both of those are up this year, so if we're talking about buying a new backhoe.
Which, and which one is you get, do you get the most, right?
Yeah.
I, I.
Cause Nate's truck is running really well, from what I understand, but again, there's only so much cash to go around.
And then, right.
Right, but even if you buy, so you buy the used, you buy one at sixty or seventy thousand dollars, who's to say down a month down the road, you're not gonna have to sink thirty or forty, and you, you don't know, you never know where you're getting used. You know, you don't know what the previous people did, or how lack of maintenance, or it's been traded in for a reason, you know?
Sorry, I was coming back here.
Okay.
Okay.
So talking to you guys that are used to dealing with this equipment, are the newer models? We just bought a new dishwasher. It's a piece of crap. Brand new. Poorly designed. I miss my old dishwasher. Will new, buy new?
Yeah.
The quality, you know, are we gonna get thirty years out of a new one? I, you know, is it worth putting that much money into a brand new one? If we're, if the quality isn't gonna be there, because we're in a throwaway society?
Well, we're, machinery isn't necessarily there yet, as far as that goes, and, and.
And realistically, that backhoe probably should've been replaced ten years ago.
The backhoe should've been replaced a lot, or.
Maybe even longer, I don't.
Well, it's, it's twenty, twenty-seven, twenty-eight years old right now, so, so it's, it doesn't owe us anything.
Right.
And I would like to think that I would be long gone to my reward by the time we have to replace a new one.
It'll be someone else's problem.
Yeah, well, definitely would be that, but.
So Nate, Nate just got a text from Joel over in, in Polteny, and his new back, John Dear backhoe is a hundred and sixty-three thousand.
Hundred and sixty-three.
Which puts our, which puts our, even with the twenty-five percent, it puts us at a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars cash to buy.
Used is looking pretty good.
Yeah.
You know how I said I leaned over to the other side right here? Uh, we're, I'm back at a used backhoe.
She was saying, I was thinking call the rest of the squad for whip line.
It was almost a big one, but it, uh, no, and, but that also only takes seventy, the seventy thousand that we, we can get, not to exceed, to get a used one, and it leaves us, where we can still have discussions about what else in the capital budget needs to be replaced, and it didn't drain everything to get one piece of equipment for the transfer station, I'm, so I'm, I'm, I'm.
Yeah.
After that, there's, I don't wanna spend a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, no.
We don't get, uh, we don't get that grant for new, for used equipment?
That's be twenty-one, year twenty-one or going there.
Oh, okay.
So that's, that's still like a, even with seventy thousand, you're still getting, you still get a ninety thousand dollar piece, about ninety, ninety-five thousand dollar piece of equipment.
If we can find a good one, that's probably is the way to go, but, you know, you, you gotta really look out for us.
So for ninety, a ninety-five thousand dollar piece of equipment, you'd pay seventy-one thousand?
What, the board's consensus, we were all the way over to one side and snapped quickly back.
But what, I think we're close, what it sounded like, we're, I'd be willing to, to make a motion not, not to exceed to get used or new, not to exceed a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Total, total purchase price.
Total, total price. Now, when you take that and say, what's it gonna, what do we have to come up with for this? If we get the twenty-one or, the twenty-one or newer.
That's using the grant.
They're using the grant, that's why I say you have twenty twenty-one or.
Would it make sense to cap the town's responsibility in, in the purchase, rather than the total purchase price?
Could, but it, uh, when I'm going to total purchase, that money's gotta, we're jumping into reserve accounts every place, so the towns is gonna be the total purchase price, cause we don't have that, that kind of money when we start talking ARPA and reserve funds, we're just gonna get to.
So I, I guess I'd hate to include the grant a lot, man.
Okay.
In the not, in the not to exceed number.
Not to exceed?
Right, right.
So, yeah, because we don't have that money.
Right, I, I don't have, no, I'm not including the grant.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm talking that we'd have to go back and.
So yours, yours is at a hundred and twenty-five?
Yeah.
In town cash? Or total purchase price?
That's what we were just talking about, and I said, I, I'd, I'd go from seventy to town cash.
Seventy thousand dollars in town cash?
Nope, a hundred, we, didn't we say a hundred?
You said a hundred and twenty-five.
Hundred and twenty-five? That lets you go, if you're up at the hundred, whatever the hundred, say it's a hundred and fifty thousand, and you get the twenty-one percent on that, if we put a hundred and twenty-five with it, what would be your amount? How close to get you?
Uh, for a hundred and fifty thousand, it'd cost you a hundred and twelve thousand.
So.
So you'd get, I mean, for a hundred and twenty-five thousand, you could buy a brand new one for just, you could buy the one Nate just got.
The one he just got.
Yeah, the one you gave the corporate is the one they bought.
What'd you say, one twenty-two?
It's, I mean, if one twenty-five town cash gets you a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollar backhoe.
But un, but understand, maybe, maybe we're, but I'm if there's a twenty twenty-one used backhoe, I don't want the brand new one, I want the, I want the twenty twenty-one used backhoe.
Right, so we wanna cap the year we're looking at, twenty-one or newer, you, right?
That's correct.
Don't wanna go.
And that gets me, because that's what gets me the grant money.
Right.
Even though I don't wanna count the grant money, but I don't wanna go out going, cool, I can, that means I can spend up to here, I'm gonna go spend a hundred and sixty, no, I want you to beat every bush to find the twenty twenty-one used backhoe.
That's a very long motion.
I know, that's right.
I didn't think how much, how much cash, though.
But Fairhaven, the way I understand you, you're talking about a commitment of a hundred and twenty-five thousand, not to exceed a hundred and twenty-five, is that what you're saying? Of Fairhaven's cash, or are you?
No, that's not, because that has us spending a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars for a new one. I, I do, take, give me the percentage that, that gets me.
So, so if you spend a hundred and twenty-five thousand of Fairhaven money, you would, the, the extra twenty-five percent gets you to the brand new one? A hundred, a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty-two thousand of Fairhaven money gets you a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollar backhoe.
Right, it gets me to the brand new one, but I'm saying is, I don't wanna go out and just buy a brand new one. I wanna go out and work very hard to find a twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-two used backhoe. And if you tell me you work really hard and you can't find it, and you can't even find a twenty twenty-three used backhoe, then I would say, yes, we need a backhoe, that never was the issue. And how do you put that in a motion? How do you put that in a motion?
So what we would need is a, is a dollar amount to cap it.
Right.
Regardless of years, like, you don't wanna spend more than this from your Fairhaven money.
Where are we going, I see where we're gonna get seventy thousand, twenty thousand from ARPA, twenty thousand from Public Works Reserve, fifteen thousand from Sewer Reserve, fifteen thousand from Water Reserve, that was gonna get us seventy thousand dollars. I do not see where I'm getting a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Stop making that motion.
Show me, show me, no, but show me where the other money's coming from, like, if, to get the hundred and twenty-five thousand, ARPA's already taken, Public Works Reserve is probably is twenty thousand, is, is that?
So there's, there's, there's currently fifty thousand in ARPA. There's currently fifty thousand open for ARPA.
Public Works, there's, there's seventy-nine thousand, what are we taking out of that?
Fifty K. Thirty K is eighty? I still need another seventy, if you take fifty K from ARPA, Public Works Reserve with, uh, seventy K would get us to a hundred and twenty-five thousand, right?
That gets you to a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty.
I've got, I've got eighty plus seventy, if, if I went to seventy thousand on Pub, Public Works, if I took eighty and seventy thousand.
Ten thousand dollars of that is gonna take off the mark, right?
Yeah, but there's seventy, there's seventy, how much is there?
There's seventy-nine.
Seventy-nine.
Seventy-nine, so, so we're dealing with sixty-nine.
I'm just, I'm just trying to see where the money, I'm just showing where the money's coming from, is all.
And you're stealing gold from your department, too, bro.
Yeah.
If you did seventy K from Public Works Reserve, there's, there's.
We don't have seventy K yet.
I mean, that would, that would milk that, so that seventy and the fifty, ARPA brings you to a hundred and twenty already.
Be a little bit shy there, I mean, you, you don't have exactly seventy, you have sixty-nine, so if you said sixty-five, to be on the safe side.
What if you left Public Reserve, let's, 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 instead of twenty, can we put that thirty? What if you left Public Reserve, let's, 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 instead of twenty, can we put that thirty?
Yeah, whatever you guys want.
No, no, I'm, I'm just, I see what you're saying, you don't wanna, you don't wanna milk that Public Reserve down. If you went thirty K, there's eighty, um.
Where are you getting the thirty K from?
Uh, the Public Works Reserve that we have for twenty.
Okay.
Yeah, there's, there's like seventy-nine to, to work with, I'm just trying to get to the numbers, so, to see where.
Well, do we have to get to that number, that's the first.
If, if we're gonna make a motion to, to use a hundred and twenty-five thousand of our money.
What I'm saying is, do we have to get to that twenty-five thousand?
Would it make sense for us to beat the bush next week or so and see where we can.
I'd, I'd like to see what you have out there, we come, does it, we come back at our next meeting and, and know or no?
I'd, I, we, we should do that, but what happens?
Is we're still, we're still gonna have to have this discussion.
Yeah, what's gonna happen is, we're gonna go out and look at all these numbers, and then we're gonna bring these numbers back, and you guys are gonna look at all these pictures, and, and we're still gonna be trying to figure out what number to use, like, we need some kinda cap to keep our, keep our focus. Otherwise, we're just run wild out there.
Well, let's, let's do a hundred and twenty-five as much as I can.
I, well.
I think we, I think we can get something pretty close to it.
To a hundred. I, and I look at, if we.
I don't, I'm just confused, or the town is, is spending physically up to a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Well, that's what we've been.
We're gonna use a twenty, that twenty-five percent grant, that's what we hope.
That's what we hope.
Around a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Right, if we get that, that lets us get the new one you're talking about. And, and to come up with a, I, I, by using fifty K that we have left in the ARPA, and we have to use it or lose it anyway, so let's earmark it there, the Public Works Reserve fund, instead of twenty K, I'm saying, let's use thirty K, that, that'll be eighty, the Sewer Reserve instead of fifteen, let's, if you moved that to, uh, twenty-three, and the Water Reserve to twenty-two, you should come out to a hundred and twenty-five, right?
Yes.
I'm just, and again, I'm just.
Trusting their math.
No, no, I just, I just, I mean, those are the places we were gonna get them anyway, and I'm just saying, let's get there in the same places, the logic.
Especially since you said they do a lot.
Make the motion.
I'll, I'll make a motion to look, to go out and purchase a backhoe.
With town funds not to exceed.
With town funds not to exceed a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, of which fifty.
Wait, wait, town funds not to exceed?
A hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
One twenty-five, whoops, one twenty-five thousand, okay.
And that's broken down with fifty thousand dollars from ARPA.
Okay.
Thirty thousand from Public Works Reserve.
Okay.
Twenty-three thousand from Sewer Reserve. And twenty-two thousand from Water Reserve.
Okay.
I hope you're not gonna ask me to repeat that.
Can you say that one more time? I didn't catch that last part.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Everybody understand what we're doing?
No.
Clear.
Discussion.
Discussion.
Discussion? Is this where we wanna spend the remainder of our ARPA funds? So tonight, I learned that we had now fifty thousand in ARPA remaining. I, I don't know, I, I think there's some other areas that I'd like to think about.
This is money that we had already had spent, that because of the grants, they already spent, because we already had exhausted, our, had, pretty much, and so the grants came in, so the money we already spent, we're just saying, okay, let's reallocate it here. I usually, I hear you, uh, that one-time.
So essentially, we're saying, let's take the ARPA funds, and instead of getting a used backhoe, let's get a new backhoe.
That's, that's what we're saying, it's a one, and, is it truly a one-time spend? Probably not, 'cause we're gonna have to somewhere out in the future replace the backhoe, but I'm.
It's, it's a much more of a one-time spend situation than, than most cases are.
Your motion doesn't say buy a new backhoe.
No, it doesn't.
It says to cap our spending.
Because, because I'm hoping they're gonna find a twenty-twenty-one.
Okay, well, that's, that's what I'm saying.
That's why, but they could.
You may not spend the hundred and twenty-five thousand.
May not, if we don't, then I'd come back and say, let's have that discussion about where to put that, if we don't need a hundred and twenty-five.
Right, this is just a cap, so we can, they can.
This is just so they can go start looking and, and getting.
We might find that it might be out of that price range, you know, you might have to go back a couple of years, who knows?
They could come back in here also and say.
But we can't go back any older than twenty-one anyways, we lose that grant.
We lose the grant, right.
It's gotta be a little twenty-one or newer.
I'm more concerned that they come back and it's a hundred and eighty thousand, quite frankly, the way equipment and everything keeps going. And what they were just saying about the fire department, that would be my concern, and, and that's the problem with the, the longer you.
Were you finished with?
Yeah, I'll go ahead.
No, no, I, no, I don't know, I guess I don't have, yeah, enough information, I'd like to see the cap lower and aim for finding something that meets the criteria of new, uh, rather than setting that threshold higher and sending the rest of those ARPA funds with that backhoe. I, I don't disagree that we need a backhoe.
So, so the grant doesn't open until next month, you guys wanna just?
We'll just wait, if the grant's not open until next month, while we hold up making the decision, we've at least had the conversation to this point of how we might get there, and with that way, they can go out and start seeing what's there, is that what you?
I mean, if, because we, I mean, you guys just voted on a funding package, and then it's like, well.
No, we haven't, like, we haven't voted on it yet.
Oh, you haven't?
Oh, no, we, 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 we've got in, we're in the discussion phase, and if you wanna wait, I'd be more than willing if, to withdraw my motion.
My thoughts are that we could, we could, um, give them this to work with now and see where they're at, and come back in a couple meetings.
We'll work with a hundred and twenty-five thousand, and then if you find something more or less than.
Less, then, then, the compromise would be, it's a gamble that there may be money left or not.
Well, it'd be more information to, to make an appointment.
That would let us, and it also would let us, let you look at, what would, what would you spend that fifty thousand on? They had to have that thought, have time to have that thought, be thinking about that. So I will withdraw my motion.
I don't think you have to, I think, I don't think we're gonna go with the motion, if, if that's all right with everybody. We'll go with the motion, that gives them a, that gives them something to, to work with. If they come back and tell us differently, we'll, we'll change the motion.
I, yeah, but I don't know if that address Chad's concern. If we go ahead.
I, I mean, we could operate under the consensus of the board to have that as a target number and see what we find out.
That's fair, is, if, if that's okay, are you guys comfortable doing it that way?
I, I mean, uh, at least that gives us a, a threshold, yeah, so we can work with that.
Now we can withdraw that motion.
No, no, withdraw the motion.
You're withdrawing?
I withdraw the motion, and, and I think the minutes should reflect that it's the consensus of the board that we should look at a, uh.
With that kinda threshold.
A, a backhoe, replacing our backhoe not to exceed a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
So, the motion becomes a target?
Yeah, yes.
And a consensus.
Nick.
Can we have a recess?
Yes.
We can, we can.
Yes, we can.
Coin drop.
There's more, well, at least we'd already talked about the more.
Boy, that was close, man, you almost got a hundred and sixty thousand dollar backhoe.
May still.
Yeah.
Right on schedule.
Yeah, we're doing good.
Yeah.
Coin drop.
For, for anybody that's unfamiliar, every, once a year, uh, our nonprofits and our, our folks that do social services, uh, they apply to get a coin drop, where, you know, you go and stand out on the highway and collect money from people that drive by. We're allowed four coin drops per, uh, per year per our ordinance.
We request to have a move a little further down away from Lewis Lee.
They're supposed to be between that and the brand new, or the shot cut it.
It's always fun trying to get off of that, it's coin drop day.
So we got five, we got five applicants, but we only got four slots, so I need somebody to draw.
The unlucky person?
So I'm gonna ask this question, I, I may have asked it last year.
Get the cameraman.
Look at, yeah, no.
Oh, no.
Here's the deal. Why is that four, is that a state?
No, it should, it should be none.
That's our.
No, I'm just asking, why, why?
We, we, that's in our, that's in our rules, if you were to look at, if you were to look at our rules in town, it'll, it'll say not to exceed four.
It was three at one time.
We, we could.
It up to four and, yeah.
Yeah, we have the ability to change.
They're irritating.
How many of those five applicants had a coin drop last year?
Oh, four, four of five.
Four out of the five?
Mm-hmm.
I suppose I would suggest that the one who didn't get one and get three out of the remaining four that had last year.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, wait, here, here's my own, here's my only concern, we have a policy, you pull it out and says, it says random draw. If we change the rules sitting here tonight without changing the policy, I think we're opening ourselves up, and we can, we can pull that in as a policy.
We discussed that, we've gotta look at these pol, these policies.
We, we, we can look at that policy again, look at number and how we, 'cause I, I don't disagree with you, but I'd like to see the one who didn't get in, but.
So chances are they'll get it this year anyway.
You just gotta pull, just pull one, let's not, let's not overthink this.
I'll let the new guy, I'll let the new guy.
So, so.
There's a number on that, that number corresponds to.
And that's, oh, and the number on that is the one that's not going to.
Is the not going to get it.
Number's four.
Just, I know, roadblock.
No, no favor to the four.
You got a number four?
Yep. Here you go, thanks, thanks for bringing that aside.
Number four, no.
Number four was the dog park, so the dog park is not getting, and they did have number, they did have one last year.
They did have one last year, so, so the one who didn't got, got one this year.
Perfect, and it worked out good as, as we.
Perfect. And everybody's welcome to apply again next year. Um, we have a J, which is a.
New EDC person, appointment? Yes, we had.
Did you, did you do a number I?
Yeah, we did the.
Yeah, we did it earlier, mower purchase.
That was before the fire charge.
Yeah, that was with the rec committee.
Well, that was a mower for the, oh.
We had, we had, uh, Mike, and, I mean, I'm probably, I'm looking for the last name, Pavlic, uh, who moved to Fairhaven, I think last November, lives out on, uh, River Street, uh, who came to our Economic Development Committee meeting and said, boy, I'd really like to be on this committee. Uh, Mike, uh, works, uh, um, a, a lot, he's a professor, I think at John Hopkins. And, uh, I think he's a history professor, I'm trying, trying to remember, but, uh, he, he was really excited about being there, and, uh, so I'd like to, uh, make a motion to appoint Mike to the Economic Development Committee.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Move the post?
Welcome aboard.
Do you know his, what's his last name?
Pavlic?
P A, P A V E L E C.
Okay, property tax stabilization efforts, what?
And that, that's revenue, right?
Yeah, that's revenue.
Just not to be confused with, uh, tax stabilization, it's a revenue discussion.
So, so page four of the, um, of the chief, chief, it was last meeting or the meeting before, somebody, the last real meeting, we had, um, somebody said, well, what did, we had a revenue committee, what did the revenue committee say? And we have been implementing, trying to implement some of those things, um, but I went back and just put a list down of, of things that had been tossed out there, and that's what you see there. I hate to lose the momentum we've had on this, it's, some things, it doesn't matter what we do, somebody is not gonna like it. It, it's just, I, five bucks threw people into a tailspin, so, but there's no other way to pull down, there's, there's no other way to pull down these property taxes unless we, we start making decisions on it, so.
Well, as Rich brought up, yeah, what, how they charge, what, you said forty dollars?
Fifty dollars.
Fifty, and I, I think that's a pretty common price for.
It is.
Any flea markets, antique shows, whatever, I mean.
Well, see, the, the, the problem, I don't wanna revisit that one this year, 'cause we promised we wouldn't.
No, yeah, I'm not, yes.
We, we, we thought, maybe we talked to get the, the.
Chamber of Commerce?
Chamber of Commerce in there discussing.
Yeah, next, yeah, for next year.
For, for, get it set up for next year.
Yeah. Yeah.
And that's what we should do.
Yeah, I agree.
So was your thought, Joe, in, in putting it in here, because I like to think that when I look at this list, we, we tried the, the park thing, and we'll relook at it next year. The first one, improve, uh, revenue from the recreation, adding different camps and things, I think we're, they're doing it right now. Uh, at the rec committee is, is already moving things, so I, I would say, you know, I, that, that's, indoor rec, we haven't done yet, but adjusted transfer station punch cards been done, we have the one-dollar punches. The next one is to start a trash pickup, uh, uh, program, we haven't looked at that yet, but the next one, look into one percent option tax, we've got a grant out, looking, but seeing if we can, if that makes sense to, to revisit.
I forgot to talk to that guy.
So, so, so we've got, uh, when I look at this, four items on this list of what that revenue committee did, we've, we've done, we've done some things.
So, going back to the, the trash pickup, I always said this, and, and I have a private trash service, 'cause one, I don't like spending my free time going to the dump and messing around with that, so that. You, you know, I mean, the big, the big one around here, the main ones, Martel's the main one, so I don't know, look at that and hire something like that, or the town ends up buying a trash truck and they do it, or, you know.
That's a labor-intensive.
It's a lot of.
Labor-intensive, there's a lot of equipment.
It's another truck, it's more hydraulic equipment that's going down, it's two more employees at least.
At least, at least one.
Yeah, well, two.
Never that makes for revenue.
Should be self-sustained.
They're saying off top, that's what's gonna cost us.
Yeah, I, so I agree, but this is why we have to have the conversation. There are companies out there that every single day, they make money picking up other people's garbage.
No question.
So, if we start with, but look at what it's gonna cost us, yep, but there are people making a lot, millions and millions of dollars.
I know.
And we, we have an advantage because we have a transfer station, like, we don't have to go outside of Fairhaven.
Right, and these guys are hauling, uh, hubbards or over New York or.
I'm just saying, gotta think about it.
Right.
When I, when I, when I look at this list here, it was one that had said, you know, we've got some that we've started. If there's something here of one of these bullets that looks like, like the trash, or, uh, hold the carnival, uh, or, uh,
Did you?
Other things, I would say, put a proposal together, come back here.
Did you ever reach out to Bill at Brandon about who they get to do their carnival, 'cause I knew, you know, I had that.
No, I never, that, I don't think that's a moneymaker, but I would like to talk, I never did come.
I mean, I told you, I went to it, it was last summer, and that, all weekend long, that parking lot was full.
Where were they?
It was in Brandon, their rec field, they have the huge carnival up there.
Yeah.
Massive, and people are coming from everywhere, I mean, I ran into people from Fairhaven that went up to it. The only reason I went to it was my wife's from Brandon, you know, so.
Did you, what, what was going on?
There's a huge carnival up in Brandon, they put on.
Oh, carnival?
Yeah.
I, I, I was up at, uh, uh, the airport the other day, and saying, now you talk about having an ideal place that in August, so we're not messing with the bobolinks and the bunnies, but we, we have to put a carnival. Oh, I, I, I. Oh, I, I, I know.
The dog park.
Right, but, but getting back to the idea of a carnival, there, you easily for parking and if you, if, if someone wanted to do some research and see what, what that would, would do.
I just, yeah, I hate to be a naysayer, but, uh,
Yeah.
We're having all kinds of trouble to get a carnival or a, uh, one day memorial day celebration going together, so.
I, I-
So it's an, it's an undertaking.
It's a, some, it would be, whoever, that, someone would need to go out, do the research, bring the proposal in and see, go ahead.
Are you volunteering?
No. I am just pointing out that it's the Brandon rec department that does all this organization. So if we're getting a rec director and a rec department is being put together, this, my suggestion is, once they get-
Their feet wet.
Things settled, you know, as far as-
Could be a fun reason.
The fields and, and that sort of stuff, once they get themselves settled and you have your director, this is the sort of stuff that director should be, uh, cause I know that's what Phil does up in Brandon.
He did, he's the, I think, assistant town manager now, my wife said.
Oh, maybe.
Yeah, yeah.
But he's still heavily involved.
Yeah, he, yeah.
Cause he's the one who runs the Brandon idol up there.
They even did, so, we went to their Fourth of July parade last year and they do a duck race up there, a rubber duck race.
They're doing it again this year.
So you buy a rubber duck or how many, and they literally dump it-
Oh, we should do that.
Into the river, and they have a sketch point, whoever's is the first one across the line they get, there's like a fifty-fifty pot or whatever.
That'd be fun, we should do that, that's, that's easy.
We could do that from dam, dam to the outlet from the, we could do that easy.
That would be easy.
Be a fun, that's, and there's a, you know, I mean, I don't know how much money you'd make, but there's a little bit of, you know.
And you could do that in, in one of the celebrations, like Spring Fling or-
Spring Fling and Apple Fest.
Or the Apple Fest.
I mean, bulk rubber ducks, you buy, can't be, you say a hundred dollars worth of rubber ducks, you know, what is that, you know, you make sure you can find that through like somewhere, like a thousand, that, ducks or whatever.
I think they, they only lost like four or five last year.
Right, but it's cool, we, we bought a couple and for each other kids and-
That's pretty funny, that would be fun just to do.
Figure that one out, that should be easy enough.
Yeah.
We got, we have town space on the road around both ends.
So we're, we're moving on that, but I don't wanna spend a thousand hours on it.
Right.
Let's, let's go, if we're going there, we're, we check on the, check on the one percent grant thing and, yeah, let's go from there. And we will keep, keep it on the agenda and we'll check ourselves every once in a while, okay? Uh, parking lot. Town plan is having its first, its first, um, public hearing tomorrow at seven o'clock. And then I think the next thing on the agenda is downtown village designation, our end of it, so.
Twenty twenty-five, I think.
Yeah. Yeah, so we'll, we'll get going on that, but that's where we're at.
And, and that new town plan is on the website, looks pretty good.
Yeah, it's-
Looks pretty good.
It's a little more positive than it was the last time. More uplifting, I, I hope, I hope, that was, that was the goal.
The town plan comes before the designation?
Oh, yeah, we've gotta have the town plan in, in, we, we have to have the town plan by June or we can't start applying, we can't apply for any more grants.
And I think we have until next year before the designation, we have another year-
Yes.
On the village designation.
Okay, anything, anybody else wanna talk about in the parking lot? Local accomplishments? I, I, the only one I would mention is, once again, the, the rec, the rec department is, is the, the down-
The playgrounds looks a hundred percent better than it did.
And, and the group that washed the marble posts, and, I mean, we, we, we got a lot of, a lot of folks out there doing good stuff.
It's, on Friday, to let folks know, um, the high school, I dropped off some shelves and rakes and I, I got the high school kids, they're just gonna start at the school and come through the village, just cleaning sidewalks, scraping up weeds, scraping up dirt, picking up trash, so they're focusing on the village center this time around.
Great, that's Greenup Day and that's good, oh, cool.
And now the picture we saw of you up at the high school, what was that a career, what, what type of-
Oh, yeah, did you see that?
What was, what was that gathering of?
So we did, uh, Kerry, Kerry and I visited the career fair last, was it last week? Last week to just kinda get the word out that, hey, Fairhaven does have some, some, some good jobs, some careers that you can, you can still have and still live in your hometown, so. I showed off that I can do three pull-ups. The best was fifteen, so.
Good.
I used to be able to do ten, I was very proud of that.
I don't think I've ever done ten in my entire life combined.
One. Sorry, I pushed my feet up.
Board round table.
Okay, I got one thing, I think Gilson, maybe it was still, that, that state fellow did call me today, Joe. And, uh, they are planning on some fairly substantial drainage work around the underpass at the airport road. There's, like I've said all along, there's been some issues there, and they're, they're gonna look at it.
Ah, good for them.
So that's, that was good news. And, uh, I can't stress enough, and we had a fairly lengthy conversation about maintenance. And he, they all agree, upping shoulders, digging ditches and keeping them all clean is the most important thing you can do. So, hopefully we can do better.
Good.
That's it.
Uh, so, you bring up, they brought again the light in the Veterans Park. Um, I don't know, we've been asked again, they, issues with that, so I don't know if we can get, was there an electrician?
Just not aimed right, or?
It's, it, I, I just wanna bring that up and play you just for-
And then I, yeah.
You go.
But anyway, that light is shining up at the flag,
Yeah.
but it's not illuminating the flag good enough anymore. I don't know what type of light that is, and I don't know anything about it, but we really should have an electrician look at it.
I don't know if we can get Dan Gray to come look at it, I, I mean, and then, uh, the other thing- Yeah, so if we can get that thing, especially Memorial Day come up, that'd be really nice to have that. And then the, one of the monuments, I think, in that park, uh, some of the letterings faded. Uh, I got a picture, I was sat by-
The monument is out?
Uh-
So are you saying, can you send it to him?
Uh, you can look at, the V and the S on Veterans is fading.
World War One?
Yeah, that was brought up, yeah.
Uh, you know, you wanna see that?
On the World War One?
What he's talking about.
I'm not sure which one it is. I, I couldn't figure out which one, it's just WW, so I don't-
Which one, is it one of the ones in Center?
I don't, I don't know, I, the picture doesn't say, but I'm sure you could-
Yeah, just take a look, but maybe the-
Needs, needs some black, some paint, or, cause it looks like it was painted in black after it was etched in the paint.
It might be something, we can get the Legion to-
I was gonna ask, who, who is it, do we maintain those? I, I've never been asked to maintain those.
Yeah, they're ours.
They're, okay, I don't know, I've never-
But it's, it's, it's right up the Legion's alley. It's right up the Legion's alley, let me, let me talk to them. What? Oh, okay, then I, I will bring it up then.
Yeah, but if we can get somebody to come look at that light.
It's, I'm not, and, uh, this has been asked two, two or three times now, it's not that I'm ignoring it, it's that I'm already two or five percent over my budget. Come July one, we'll have money to do that, but that's, you know, it's just, it's just a couple hun- it's illuminating, it's just not bright enough. So I understand, but we're, I'm already in the negative, so every time this, this other thing gets dumped on top, like, it's only a hundred, it's only two hundred, it's only five hundred.
I, I hear you, Joe, I feel good.
And at the end of the day, I, I-
Me, I know that, but-
It is somewhat important for the Veterans.
Right.
Well, I know, but at the end of the day, I have to sit here and explain myself.
Something that the Legion might be able to come up with.
I was just gonna say, can you get the Legion, I think I'd go talk to them.
And also, as, as long as we're on the light subject of lighting, I go down to the playground last night at ten thirty, it started down there. There was no way around, but anyways, right down there by the bathroom, there is a light there that's not working.
Yes, it's not connected.
It's not working.
So-
That would, oh, we get that fixed.
Yeah, so the board took lighting out of the budget, if you remember, oh, yeah. So we agreed that we would put cameras on and ask for that, what it was, was we're not doing lighting, the rec committee was gonna do lighting. So the town does not, we don't have money to do lighting.
We can mention that.
It needs to happen, I mean, it's dirt.
I'm just saying, there's a light there that's maybe just needs a bulb, I don't know.
This is the difference between our budget and the school budget, this, we don't have any money and we, we admit it.
No, we, I won't let you get in trouble, moving right along.
Uh, yeah, no, thanks again to everyone who came out and worked on the fields, they do look amazing. You know, I had something, and I think it, it might have escaped me. Oh, uh, if we could, if we could put out, and, and I'm gonna try to put out something on social media myself too, kind of a, a schedule of events and kind of timelines, general timelines, uh, that, that I think would be helpful for, for folks to, to understand kind of just how busy DPW is and the schedule that they, they kind of take to, uh, meeting all the needs in the springtime and the early summertime, uh, cause, you know, I, I'm seeing kinda like the, well, why haven't they done this? Or why haven't they done that, and it's, well, it's on the schedule, you just haven't gone there yet.
Can we take the schedule you emailed and can I put that on the Fairhaven people's place and you put it on your page? I can share that and we'll-
Yeah, it, yeah, and everybody understands, that's the thing, if they know that it's on the list and it rains one day, they can understand that, if they don't see it on the list, they just think you're being ignored.
There was one more thing, uh, my wife was heading back from T-ball practice last night and noticed a resident on Washington Street putting their grass clippings into the sewer drain. Uh, so just as, uh, heads up that you shouldn't be doing that. But, yeah, she's like, are you supposed to be doing, I was like, no, no, you're not supposed to put any grass clippings into the sewer drain.
That may be an announcement, that worthy of an announcement.
I think so, she stood, watched and just sweep all those clippings right down the drain, I was like-
You mean the storm drain?
Yeah, the storm, yeah, the storm drain, sorry.
Storm drain, storm drain that's going to the, it's going to the river, right.
Yeah, which, which most of them need cleaning anyway.
Yeah.
But, yeah, it's just, it's, again, again, DPW is shorthanded, the guy's out on sick leave, and they also have to demand to dump three days a week, transfer station. So there is a lot of work for just a few folks.
But like Joe says, too, though, we're almost spent on our budget, so we're limited on DPW side of what we can do.
True.
Far as stuff like we got, you know, there is Culver's family, but-
True.
You know, we don't have the money.
You don't have money to buy the, the material, but you could clean, you, if you had the time, you could clean.
Yeah, you could clean, you could clean catch basins and maybe do some ditching without spending a lot of money, cause you're gonna get, the people get paid anyway. Yeah.
Right.
And the equipment-
No, I'm just saying, it's, you know, fifty-fifty thing, boy.
But you also had the extra work on Union Street-
Yeah.
That's taking up a lot of your time and, you know, it's-
That was, I said, drove by there.
I, I really appreciate what you do, I really do.
Little bit more hay now, project should be going up.
You know, you know, people, I don't think people realize that, that's what I'm trying to say, and people should know what they're up against.
Yeah, we have burial steel and soil, and we usually just make burials this time of year, so I mean, it's not, there's just a lot of things. And we, we know what has to be done every year, I mean, I've been here for ten plus years now, you know, I know what has to be done and-
Well, that, I mean, that's, the, the, it's a great idea to get that posted and so you know what you're, where you're at what, what you're up against and the amount of people you got to do it with, people, people understand what work is.
We got claw roots too, if you want to use.
I'm, I'm good.
Well, no, whenever we can, I can do that, but for now, we'll just post those in the, on social media just to kinda help.
I don't have anything, we already talked about my stuff, so.
So we can go into the, view of the patents? Okay, I'll make a motion to accept payroll for thirty-two thousand nine hundred and sixteen dollars.
Wait, 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 gotta find it, okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve payroll for thirty-two thousand nine hundred and sixteen dollars and six cents.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye. Make a motion to approve the warrants for a hundred and forty-six thousand seven hundred and ninety-two dollars and fifty-seven cents.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye. And the checkbook status is at seven hundred and seventy-two thousand two hundred and thirty-nine dollars and sixty-nine cents.
There was, there was a revised?
There was a second that weren't, that we didn't sign in the last time.
Right.
Yep.
I'll make a-
The second number.
Thirty-four change.
The thirty-four change, make a motion to accept the second, is this a payroll or?
Payroll warrant.
Payroll for thirty-four thousand five hundred and eighty dollars and ninety cents.
And that was the correction, um, maybe like three meetings ago, a warrant was signed, but there was a mistake that didn't pay Nate, so.
So? And then, good thing we fixed that, now I understand, I would be concerned though, but we're gonna do that too.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks for the honor, Jerry.
Yeah, right. Well, it would've been a real short day when I saw the face, though, I was like, I'll get some more home.
Okay, want those motions to go into executive session?
Go right ahead.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session for personnel one DSA three thirteen A three and-
Real estate.
Real estate, one DSA three thirteen A two.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.